Caller City Commission meeting to order, January 7th, 2008. Call roll please.
Stephen?
Here.
Shran?
Here.
O'Neil?
Here.
Mills?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Holt?
Here.
We have a forum, thank you.
Lee Roy here?
I don't see him.
No, neither. He's always here. How about Don? There you go. All right, Don, will you please come up and pray for us? All who wish to, please rise.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come to Thee tonight with thankful hearts for all the many blessings that You've bestowed upon us. We appreciate so much being able to live in a free country, and we would ask that You would put Your guiding hand over the men and women who are serving in our military to help protect that freedom. We would pray for an end to the war around the world, that You could bring our troops home to be here as quickly as possible. Lord, we pray for our nation's leaders, for our state's leaders, for our local leaders this evening. We pray that You'd be with us as we go through this meeting, that the minutes and the business that we take care of here would be pleasing to You, and that You would keep us safe as we leave here. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Don. Okay, number one, consider approval of agenda.
I'd like to rearrange one thing, please. I'd like to take item 2C off the consent agenda and put it with item 6.
Anything else? We have a motion to approve the agenda with that change.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Sir.
Second by Commissioner O'Neil. Call roll please.
Peterson?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Holt?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Shran?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Peterson?
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 Aye.
Shran?
Only exists as a stopgap between the investigation and the chief getting the results of the investigation to make his determination on discipline. Once discipline is imposed, the officers enjoy all their rights to grievance arbitration to challenge the result of the investigation and the resulting discipline. So I wanted to make that clear because I got some questions that indicated that there was a concern that maybe we were taking away the officer's right to challenge their discipline after the fact. That's not on the table at this point. The next area of disagreement is really a tricky technical legal area. It involves health insurance. As I said at the beginning, the last contract entered into between the city and the union was a two-year contract. The union requested and the city agreed to language in that contract that allowed for the union to reopen negotiations in the middle of the contract year for the second year of the contract over health insurance. So they were locked into all the other provisions of the contract for two years, but they wanted to be able to reopen negotiations in the middle of the contract on health insurance. City agreed to this without any protest. Since we are only entering into a contract for one year and since Oklahoma law requires that we bargain over any and all, anything that affects the term and condition of employment, including monetary issues, the city removed the portion of the language from the contract that was what we called the mandatory re opener for the second contract year because there is no second contract year. This is only a one-year contract. Under the Fire and Police Arbitration Act, the city is required by law next year to bargain over health insurance. The union's proposal is to leave language in that requires the city to bargain over health insurance. The city took that language out because, again, it was a provision that was specifically built in for a two-year contract. The city's position, which went unrefuted at arbitration, is we are, we're going to be bound to bargain over health insurance next year anyways. So there, the impact of the dispute on the health insurance provision is that there is no impact. The union wants to keep language in that would reopen health insurance. Fire and Police Arbitration Act requires us to reopen it next year anyways. The next area of dispute involved incentive pay for firearms proficiency. The city offers two firearms incentives for officers who score a certain percentage or higher on a firearms proficiency test. By way of background, in the past, the city used a 20-round course that it developed. The union and the city were able to mutually agree that because the city officers were going to be required to shoot a new course for CLEET, the Council on Law Enforcement Education and Technology, that rather than shoot the two courses, we would save our time and just shoot the one required course, the 25-round CLEET course, and use the results from that course to determine what the incentives would be. After the union agreed to this, the union made the argument that the new CLEET course was a harder course, and so they requested that we lower the standards for firearm proficiency for, to receive the incentive. There's a disagreement, a matter of disagreement of opinion between the union and the city as to whether or not the course is easier, but objectively speaking, we know this. The officers shot both the 20-round and the 25-round CLEET course, the 20-round Shawnee course and the 25-round CLEET course. The average score by officers improved from the 20-round course to the 25-round course by over 5%. Under the, if we maintain the current standards, which is the city's proposal, the number of officers who will receive a firearms proficiency will actually go up from 35 officers under the old course to 38 officers under the new course. Under the union's proposal, which is to lower the standards for the first level from 85% to 82%, and for the second, or, excuse me, from 85 to 80%, and the second incentive from 95 to 92%, under that, under that proposal, 44, the number would increase from 35 to 44 of the 52 officers receiving incentives. The most telling stat, however, is the most prestigious of incentive, which is the sharpshooter incentive. Under the old contract and the, under the old course, 20% of officers were able to receive marksmanship of 95% or above, and so they were entitled to the most prestigious of incentives. Under the union's proposal, which would lower that to 92%, over 50, or 50% of the Shawnee police officers would receive the most prestigious incentive. For raw member purposes, the city's proposal would increase the incentive budget, the budget for incentives, by roughly 15%. Under the union's proposal to lower the standards for the new CLEET course, the budget for incentives would increase by 54%. The next area of disagreement relates to wages. Now, there has been, as I'm sure everybody's aware, much made of the fact that the proposals are only 0.2% off. The city offered 7%. The union's last best offer was for 7.2%. Now, as the council has been notified in executive session, and as I'll state again in open session, 7.2% was never offered during negotiations. The last offer that the union made to the city on October 31st was for 8%. This was the last offer that was made before the last best offers were submitted to the arbitration panel. When the union submitted its last best offer to the arbitration panel, it lowered its number to 7.2. The city had previously submitted a 7% offer, so the union knew what the city was going to be putting in its last best offer. It put 7.2. Again, this was never offered at the table, just by way of background as to why we weren't able to negotiate this issue away. It's because it was never put on the table. Now, as you can imagine, between, the 0.2% does not amount to that much of a difference between the two offers. It's roughly $6,000. However, just by way of background for the city, of the 52 officers who are, will be covered by the collective bargaining agreement and by the wage provision of the collective bargaining agreement, 37 of those officers will, in addition to the 7 or 7.2%, will also receive a 2.5% step raise during the course of the year. Also, by way of background, other non-uniformed employees within the city received only a 3% raise. There's also been some discussion about the fact that firefighters received a 7.25% raise. Just for clarification, there are 45 positions within the fire department that are covered by the collective bargaining agreement. Seven of those positions are currently held by firefighters. 22 of those positions are held by drivers. The firefighter rank received a raise of only 4%. The driver rank received a raise of only 6%. So for the 29 of the 45 officers, the line personnel received a 6% raise or less within the department. The reason that the average comes out so high is because the upper ranks, the highest of the ranks, received a significant raise because the city was off on those ranks. But the line personnel, the 29 of the 45 firefighters, received 6% or less. One thing to keep in mind when considering the raise are the various costs to the city in addition to the raise, in addition to what the officer takes home. There's various withholdings that must be, that the city must withhold, including, and the city also has to make a 13% pension contribution for each officer to contribute to their pension. So it's not just the, the cost to the city is not just the 7%, it's the 7% plus the 13% that we contribute to their pension. One significant area of concern, and this really goes to the change of philosophy within the department, relates to the position of corporal. Now, by way of background, this department's rank structure is composed of police officers, corporals, sergeants, lieutenants. There's theoretically a captain's position, but there are no captains right now, and the chief of police. The corporal position, however, is not actually a promotion position. The corporal position is an automatic reclassification that police officers receive if they receive a certain, CLEET intermediate certification, if they receive a certain certification. Under the old contract, officers had to wait seven years before they could be eligible to be reclassified as a corporal, assuming they had the CLEET intermediate certification. The reason that this is important is you are not eligible to test for the first promotion, which is to sergeant, until you've been a corporal for three years. You're not eligible to become a corporal until you've been a police officer for seven years. So if you do the math, you're not eligible to even compete for the first promotion to sergeant until 10 years have passed. By way of background, under the police pension system, the average career for a police officer is 20 years. So you'll spend half your career in the Shawnee Police Department before you're even eligible to test and compete for the sergeant position. Clearly, the city's position is that 10 years is far too long to, before officers are eligible to even test and compete for that position. However, because we're taking steps here, the city wanted to reduce the number of years that you had to remain a police officer from seven years to four, so that, under the city's proposal, if after four years you had received your CLEET intermediate certification, you would bump up to corporal. Now, for dollar and cents purposes, this can be a pretty good deal for the officers. The pay scale right now for police officer is spread out over seven years. Then the, when you jump to corporal, that raise from that seventh year of police officer to that first year of corporal is about 2.5%. Under the city's proposal, you could go from the fourth year of a police officer to the first year of corporal, bypassing three years of raises and jumping forward four years in the pay scale, simply by getting your CLEET intermediate certification. So by way of, to just provide you with what impact this could have, there are five officers currently within the department who could jump immediately to the corporal, well, four officers who could jump immediately to the corporal position, one officer who's very close to getting his CLEET intermediate certification. Patrol Officer Dan Schumaker, Kelly Vague, Kim Dibble, and David, David, no, excuse me, John Goss, would all be eligible for an immediate jump to corporal. Now, what this would mean for them, for Officer Schumaker and Vague, yeah, for Officer Schumaker and Vague, they would be looking at a dollar, four cent an hour increase for the city's proposal as opposed to the union's proposal. Under the union's proposal, they would make $19.10 an hour. Under the city's proposal, they would jump to corporal and be making $20.14 an hour. Officer Dibble could jump from $18.59 an hour to $20.14 an hour. This is a pretty significant opportunity for a raise that the officers will receive, and actually, if you do, if you do the math, for new officers, if you get your CLEET intermediate certification within four years, you will make more money over the long haul with the city's proposal because you'll get to the last step of corporal sooner than under the union's proposal. Under the union's proposal, it will take you three additional years to get there. When you actually do the math, because the wage proposals are so close, our giving the officers an opportunity to jump early will actually make them more money in the long run. Not only make them more money, but with the 13% pension contribution, they'll get a lot more money into their pension, and they'll get it sooner rather than later. The final issue relates to a vehicle policy. I've gotten some questions from various members of the city government about this, and so by way of clarification, the city and the union have agreed on a vehicle policy. There is one dispute between the city and the union, and that is the only dispute as to this policy. Now, by way of clarification, the policy was a shift in philosophy within the department proposed by the chief to move away from guaranteeing take-home units for supervisors and moving towards guaranteeing take-home units for members of the community. Now, we can't just say that you have to live within Shawnee. We act, by law, we have to put a geographic radius on it. The city already developed a geographic radius several years ago of 11 miles, so the police chief proposed that we simply adopt that 11-mile radius for the Shawnee Police Department take-home vehicle policy. That was accepted by the union. The chief proposed that we eliminate the guarantee for take-home vehicles for supervisor, supervisory officers. Again, the union agreed to this proposal. So the union and the city have mutually agreed that we're not going to give out units to supervisors anymore. We're going to give out units to individuals who live within a certain 11-mile radius, with a couple of exceptions. Certain individuals on special assignment will still be eligible for their take-home car based on the nature of that assignment. The, for example, the public information officer who may need to show up at a crisis to inform the public of what's going on, the K-9 officer who will need the car for his K-9 unit. But outside of special assignments, the city and the union have mutually agreed that anybody who lives outside the take, or outside the 11-mile radius should not be allowed to have a take-home car, regardless of their rank, regardless of their supervisory position, with one exception. The union wants to add language in that would be the equivalent of a grandfather clause that would allow any officer who had a take-home unit before the expiration of the last contract, that that officer would get to keep the unit regardless of where they live. As, has no doubt been made very public and has become very public in the arbitration hearing, that affects one officer, the union president. The union president offered in the arbitration hearing the argument that because he is a supervisor, he's been a sergeant now, I think, for two years, about two years, he should be allowed to keep his take-home car. Now, again, the union agreed to eliminate the guarantee for a take-home car for supervisory personnel. So if they wish to keep that guarantee for supervisors, they could have simply left that language from the prior contract in. The reason I raise this is because while the grandfather clause will help the current supervisors, as soon as a new crop of supervisors gets promoted within the department, they will not have a guarantee of a take-home car under the policy proposed by the union and agreed to by the city. The only people who will be guaranteed a car are the people who are already here right now, who have the seniority to get up in rank and become supervisory personnel. Again, this affects one officer. The city and the union have agreed to change the philosophy of this program, and there is no dispute that the, that one officer does not meet the guidelines for that, that philosophy. They want an exception built into the contract. The city opposes this because, as became very clear within the arbitration hearing, that officer lives in Choctaw. Therefore, he's asking that he be allowed to take the car to and from Shawnee to Choctaw every day of the week, five days a week, 52 weeks a year, put that mileage on the car. The chief does not feel that he can justify this to his boss. He doesn't feel he can justify it to the commission, and he doesn't feel he can justify it to the members of the, of the community, especially in light of the mutually agreed-upon goals for this program that the union has agreed upon. This gives you an overview of where we have, where we are at this point. The election, as I understand it, will be held on April 1st. We are attempting to develop ballot language with the IUPA, but have not been successful in getting them to agree to a meeting to develop the ballot language. They've requested that we develop the ballot language and send it to them. As soon as the ballot language is developed, if it is developed through mutual agreement, it will be forwarded on to the commission. If it is not agreed to mutually, it will be submitted to the arbitration panel, who will select between our two proposed ballot offers. I know that there have been a lot of questions that have come my way, by way of email from various city officials, and so at this point, if there are any questions that members of the commission or anybody else have, I'd be glad to help clarify any points that I didn't address in this presentation.
You know, we know that, just one little comment, that, you know, we've had several discussions, executive sessions and discussions about the negotiations through this contract, and there's been some people that thought that maybe we haven't negotiated in good faith, and in fact, we actually have. But one thing that sticks in my mind from, when we had the two-year contract, when we had a raise for the fire department during that two-year contract, if I recall, we actually gave an increase to the police department or the police union when we really didn't have to, in order to kind of show good faith that, you know, even though they were locked in at two years, in order to receive, you know, get some kind of parity, that we would increase them. Of course, you know, that doesn't come out anywhere. We, we still get beat up for things, but we have negotiated in good faith. We have to be good stewards of the community's money. That is, that is one of our ultimate goals here, is to be the watchdog, and Tom may be getting ready to say the same thing, because I know he's said it before, but, and it's true. I mean, it is something we have to be very conscious of, and we want to pay everyone as the most we can, give them the greatest benefits we can, but there has to be a limitation somewhere as to where can you negotiate out what's fair to everyone. So, Tom?
Well, what I'd like to stress is, and for clarification from you, Matthew, is this commission is not part of the negotiating process.
No, it, no, it is not. The commission makes the final decision.
I feel we have to be very, very careful where we tread on this issue. Our job is for the city manager to bring us the cost of the new contract, and we either vote up or down on it, depending on whether we have the money to pay for it. Now, I think this question and answer period is fine. Everybody's got a lot of questions, but I think the commission should be more or less kept out of it.
Yes, and by way of clarification, the commission, it would be nice if the commission were empowered to simply decide which contract would be selected. By law, the commission had to either accept the union's contract or have the option of submitting it to a vote of the people. Those were the only two choices that the commission had, were to either accept the union's contract or allow the people to decide which contract.
I just wanted to stress that we are not part of the bargaining process.
Right. You, you come in at the very end. If we had reached a mutual agreement, that's when the commission would get involved, by either accepting or rejecting the agreement.
Can you help explain to us what we can and cannot talk about from this point forward?
Yes. Under Oklahoma law, the commission members are allowed to talk to whomever they want about the status of the contract and the vote that's going to be held. However, there are certain limitations. City money cannot be used to fund advertisements, hold events, et cetera. Also, city officials are allowed to provide factual information. You cannot use the, the magic words of, "So vote for this." You can explain that this is the city's proposal, the city believes that it's reasonable. Here are the factual reasons why the city believes that it's reasonable. However, Oklahoma law handcuffs the city on this standpoint because the city is not actually able to go out as the city and state, "Vote for this contract." You can provide factual information, you can state your own opinion about what the basis was for why we made the offers that we did, but in the end, you have to limit yourself to the facts, and that's it. And we have provided the, I believe the manager has prepared a summary of the negotiations and the proposals, and where there's cost issues, what the cost would be, and so you can use that as, when you discuss this, as to what the facts are involving this contract Any other questions?
Thank you.
Do we have any other information, staff or the chief or?
Chief, do you have any, Tom?
Any additional information?
Yeah. I think Matt did a good job covering this, but there might be some questions about philosophy or anything about what we're talking about that you might have. I'd be happy to, to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, I know the take-home policy was something that has been controversial for a while, and we all agree, I think, that having marked police cars throughout our community is a deterrent. I know if you guys go out and go down Union by the middle school, I don't care what you're, if you're not paying attention or not, you see that police car parked out there in front of that house, and you're going to hit your brakes, even if you're going the speed limit. It's just an automatic thing. So those are good things to have, and I know we've talked about it for a while, and you finally have kind of come up with hopefully a compromise there, and I think it's too bad that, you know, we can't, can't work this thing out, and we will eventually, but I know it's kind of interesting. I don't know if some of you guys recognize throughout the community, I see, you know, other cars, like a lot of the tribal officers live without, within our community and other agencies, which is kind of interesting, but I don't know. I, I personally like seeing our police cars because I know these people live here and are here to protect us, but...
There, there's a multitude of reasons. In the past, it's been really a benefit for the officer to have that car, but it's the, it's the most expensive piece of equipment that we supply officers to do the job for us out there. And having them out and about at their residence, it's good, like I say, is a deterrent. It also spreads our equipment. We do live in Oklahoma, we have bad weather, and if a particular area got hit where we house our vehicles, where they're waiting, when the officers aren't using them, we could lose a good portion of our fleet. It also gives accountability to the officers for that particular piece of equipment. One of the things that I know that you've seen in the past is, is bike patrol. We're going to be getting some racks since the cars are now dedicated to an individual officer where they'll have a bike rack on there if they're part of the bike patrol, and you're going to start seeing bikes on the back of the cars so that we could stop those cars in whatever neighborhoods, pop off the bikes and go on patrol on the bikes. So it gives us a lot better flexibility in doing that, and accountability for that piece of equipment. And the, the radius, that's something that was set prior to me getting here, and I thought that was reasonable. That's 11 miles from city hall, and the reason why they came up with the 11 miles was because of the Shawnee Twin Lakes. So basically, it gets you out to the, past the Shawnee Twin Lakes. We took a compass and made a big circle, so you have some that may be just outside of the city limits. But if we have something like between here and you go to the, the Twin Lakes, that's not city property, but we have officers that live out there, and so if we need something out at the lakes, we can call an officer if it's an emergency situation and get them deployed out there. So it's, we have bad weather or a tornado, hopefully that won't happen, but if we do, we have all that equipment spread out throughout the community, and rather than officers having to drive their individual units, their own, or their, their own vehicles down here to get their unit, we could say, "Hey, we need you over here at this location or that location," and we save time in deploying them throughout our city.
It's a question of what's reasonable also. Now, again, as a city manager, I'm required to watch every nickel in the budget, and the 11-mile limit is pretty generous if you look at most other cities. Most cities that, that we're familiar with, they have take-home vehicle policies at all because many, many, many don't, limited to, to the city limits. So 11 miles seemed reasonable. This was, has been a point of discussion for a number of years through management letters within audits, as well as IRS rulings and so on. So again, the 11-mile limit applies to all other city employees, and the chief, and I agree with him, thought that that was reasonable as well. I mean, how far out should a vehicle go is a question when the city is paying for the wear and tear on the vehicle and the fuel, of course. So that's the fundamental question, that is reasonable, and that's the reason the proposal is.
I know one of the other things I have admired about what you've done as you came in was trying to increase the level of professionalism, training. I think we were not doing too many hours of, is it CLEET training or?
Correct. We were, according to the law, it was a minimum, you had to have at least 16 hours a year to maintain your certification to be a police officer. We've increased that, and hopefully people have been watching City Connect where we talk about that, about our training. We increased that to 96 hours a year right now, minimum. That doesn't include advanced training. That's another reason why we're wanting to, that we proposed the corporal rank, because we want to lower that time, because we want them to get that intermediate certification through the council, because that's a combination of training, experience, and hopefully college education. We encourage our officers to go to college to get that advanced training, which exposes them to other ways of doing things, and the city offers tuition assistance. So there's all kinds of things available for these officers. It's not a job, it's a profession, and that's what we're trying to change the philosophy in that regard with our officers.
There's a lot of competition for workforce. I mean, we have, we lose officers all the time to the highway patrol and, and other agencies, Oklahoma City, that can pay more money, and, you know, if you hold these guys back and they don't have an opportunity, they're going to go somewhere else. And we're going to be left without the, really, the primary thing that, as far as I'm concerned, the city offers is safety and security.
And, and that's it, true, and they want to, you know, when they, the first objective for people, "I want to be a police officer," so they get there, and after they've been there for a little bit, they said, "I'd like to advance, or maybe I want to get into supervisory ranks." And you look here, and you're going to spend half your career at a minimum before you're even eligible to test for a supervisory position. I'm not aware of another department that does that. So I mean, it's just giving opportunity to those people that want to do that, and in conjunction, they're getting additional salary for that.
Well, there's firearm proficiency is another thing that goes along with that training. I mean, I, personally, if someone's carrying a gun out here, I hope that they can use it well and, and not hit other people that may be just, you know, bystanders collateral damage, but it's important that we don't dumb down the test, that we actually have a certain level of proficiency that's certified by the state.
Exactly, and that's what we've accepted was the, since we have to do it anyhow as the CLEET standard, and that's the 25-round course, and we don't want to lower to get those incentive. The incentive is to learn that piece of equipment and to practice with it. In fact, we supply, which is very generous, 100 rounds of ammunition per month for officers to go out to the range, which typically we have open every Friday for them to practice on that particular piece of equipment. So we give them every opportunity to do that, and if, and if they go ahead and they abide by what the standards that we set for that, then good, they deserve it. They deserve the extra money that goes along with that.
Chief, to your knowledge, what other entities in the state lower their standards for their officers?
I'm not aware of anybody. Entities, you mean, you're talking about law enforcement organizations?
What as far as shooting the weapon?
I'm not aware of any. Not every department has incentives. My previous department, I didn't have an incentive for qualifying. It was the competition itself of wanting to be a better shooter out there at the range. We might have had maybe a trophy or something that we won in competition with our fellow officers, but we didn't get a paid incentive.
In fact, I was going to share that with you all. When I was at Drill this last weekend, our former garrison commander, who's lieutenant with the Oklahoma City Police Department, he and I were discussing this because we always talk police stuff and city stuff, and he was absolutely shocked that we had incentive pay for weapons qualification, and it was just something so new to him. So this is something that I think is unique to Shawnee, and truly, and I mean, as someone who's required once a year to qualify on a weapon, you need to strive to do better, and the idea that you're giving police officers or that we as a city 100 rounds a month, that's phenomenal. That's phenomenal.
My previous department was 50 rounds.
That only does it do that for, you know, army people, for true soldiers that are out there. So these guys ought to be just taking advantage of that.
Oh, yeah. We have a good range.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so that part of the contract, trying to lower the standards, is not going to benefit our community very well?
No, we want them to be very proficient should they have to use that. We hope that we don't have to use that, and very few officers in a career do use that weapon, but when they do, we want them to be accurate with it.
I have one more question. Going back to the, the original, the advisory board and disciplinary action grievances, we know just bits and pieces of some of those things. Some of those are protected, is protected information, of course, like it should be, but I do know that there is a dollar figure tied to some of this procedure, and I don't know how much you can share with us about if this, if this, if our recommendation still gives the officer all of their rights, but allows us to streamline and save money, is there any part of that that you can tell us about that may educate people?
Well, it's, it's, it's the time for my office to set up these, the review boards... Well, it's the time for my office to set up these, the review boards, also the overtime that we have to pay some of the officers to be there. We are fortunate that we don't have to pay the outside agency that supplies. Right now, I've been using one department. We've only used them for one time. And then it's the court reporter. Received a bill of about $650 and we didn't even get a transcript. That was just to have the person come here to take that recording with 600, it's a little bit more than that, I think it was about $650. So, it is, and the review board is an extension of the Office of the Chief. It's a recommending body. They could come back and say, Chief, we don't sustain these charges. And I could say, thank you very much, I'm going to proceed. I don't have to listen to what they have to say. It's an extension of my office. Most departments do not have a review board. For instance, Midwest City, they have a review board in place and, but it's the discretion, the complete discretion of the Chief of Police whether he convenes the board. I talked to the chief this morning from Midwest City and he said that he's been chief approaching nine years and has never convened the review board. And there's another procedure that you go through when you don't convene the review board. They still have their rights to the grievance process.
Once you make your decision, pass it on to the city manager. The 48 hours, is there some question here? How much burden is that on you? How much burden is that on the administration to make a decision in that time period? If we just use a scenario, we fall into a Thanksgiving weekend or a Christmas weekend, a Christmas holidays, New Years, what type of burden is that to work within 48 hours as opposed to five business days?
It's very difficult to do that. One, my schedule is not just all about disciplinary procedures and actions. I have a lot of other requirements of my position. If it's something that requires greater discipline than what I'm allowed to give, then I have to confer with the city manager, whose schedule is extremely busy. So, it depends on when these meetings are set that I have to time this out just right in order to be able to accomplish, if there is discipline, that it can be administered in the proper time because they will grieve it and they will say, if I missed it by an hour, they'll be looking for the discipline to be overturned because of that technicality.
So, if this something would have come up, say, the second week in December of 2007, during time we were in the middle of an ice storm and we had all of our hands working at getting something done and Dr. Collard here was not available, he would have to drop everything that he was doing to pay attention to the 48-hour time limit to resolve a situation within your office?
Exactly. In fact, we had one disciplinary action that we had to meet on a Sunday afternoon to confer about it so that the discipline could be administered by 12 noon on Monday.
I think this issue also, just think about, think about this. I mean, the chief is put into a position of having to make a really quick decision and I think this is, and it's an important provision. Five business days is reasonable. It's prudent. It protects the officer by allowing the chief and then the city manager to have the time to really investigate it rather than making a quick judgment. This is reasonable and appropriate. To me, this is, this is an important point because again, what is the philosophy here and what is the purpose? What are we trying to accomplish ultimately? And ultimately, of course, is a professional police department. So, I feel kind of strongly about this 48-hour rule. It just doesn't allow for good decision-making.
Well, and my question is, how is the individual police officer penalized or what's to his detriment from the 48 hours to the five days? If maybe you can help with that. Is there any downfall to that? I mean, because your pro was, hey, we're going to take more time, we're going to fully digest what we've been given and not just, you know, shoot from the hip, but on the contrary, is there a detriment to the police officer by not making a decision in the 48 hours?
And Matt may be able to add to this, but basically what they testified to is the fact that there's been a complaint filed against the officer, which could be stressful to the officer, which complaints can be. The investigative process is stressful and then going through the disciplinary process and so that's what they're saying is that we want to get it done as quickly as possible at the completion of the board to administer discipline in 48 hours. But if you're talking about, you know, police misconduct and taking appropriate action, we need to have time to consider this because this is somebody's career and there's a lot of things to be considered and we want to have time, especially if I need to confer with the city manager, that we can discuss this and we're not rushed.
And to determine the validity of the complaint, for that matter. I mean, people can make some outrageous charges that simply are baseless and it's tough to do the due diligence on that within 48 hours. That's another reason I feel pretty kind of strongly about this one. This is prudent. It's appropriate and professional.
Because you're almost in a position, and as a plain devil's advocate on both sides, you're almost in a position as a supervisor, I would think of, I need to err on the side of caution when it comes to a citizen's complaint, especially if it's something that's far-fetched in turn, like disciplining an officer, just to err on the side of caution so that the city's not exposed to liability or a citizen's not placed in jeopardy or, so I don't know.
Well, that's why, when I got here, there was no professional standards unit. There wasn't good police misconduct accountability. When complaints came in, it was, what I found out, don't do that again. And that's inappropriate if we're going to have a professional organization. So, I established a professional standards unit, investigator, trained to go and review these. So, yes, when I receive a complaint, probably 99.9% of the time, I'm going to refer that to the investigator to investigate and we've had some investigations that have been unfounded and that's why we want to do it. We want to be able to, we keep a list, a roster of all this and the disposition of these complaints. And then if we do have somebody that's not doing something appropriate, then we take what action we think is appropriate.
Also, but just for clarification, I think that might help the commission to know that about four months ago, I finalized a contract with another city with a brand-new police union that the state police union brought, came in to help them negotiate their contract. Under the language that they proposed that we adopted, the city had six months from when a complaint was initiated to issue discipline, if that helps clarify some of the issues.
Could we also speak to the salary? And Mr. Love made a very important point, if we could reemphasize that. The last time we had the ability to act on a union proposal, they were at 8%, correct?
Yes. The last proposal that was submitted by the union before the last best offers were sent to the arbitration panel was 8%. Now, to give you an idea, the arbitration panel is supposed to be deciding between unresolved issues between the city and the union. So, what they did was submitted a proposal that was never put on the table for discussion and negotiation. That's not saying much because the negotiations did not take that long this year. The city attempted to engage the union in discussion about the proposals. The union, on all of our proposed changes to the contract, would not deviate from the line of, we like the old contract language better, or we prefer the old contract language. I myself, participating in one of the negotiating sessions, asked the union president several questions, pointed on one of our police officer Bill of Rights proposals that was, had multiple parts to it. Is it this part, what's your concern with this part? Maybe we can modify this to address some of your concerns. I kept getting, we prefer the old contract language. So, we didn't really have that discussions at the table. We attempted to, we attempted to engage the union. You can't engage in a discussion though if both sides won't discuss it. Even more disheartening though, is the fact that we never had the chance to see the 7.2% proposal. The last proposal we got was eight, then they submitted 7.2 to the arbitration panel after we offered them seven. So, I don't know the motivation behind that. I'll leave that to everyone else to determine why they offered 7.2, but it was never offered at the table.
I know, I was really surprised because when we were going through the fire negotiations, at no time did we ever talk about seven and a quarter. We talked about the different ranks that needed to be elevated. Some were not making, were way behind, some were okay and some need a little bit. And, you know, our goal, and we've not made this a secret, is that we've tried to be somewhere around 75 percentile of the 16 cities that we try to compare ourselves to. We can't afford to pay the most and we definitely don't want to pay the least, but we try to be somewhere in there and we've looked at that for rank and file, we look at that for police and fire and I think we've made that pretty clear in the last few years. I'm curious, speaking of the salaries, you know, the wages, I know when we were first elected, four years ago now, it's about four years ago, we were looking at a 10% cut across the board. We were in serious, serious financial trouble. Since that point in bringing Dr. Collard on, we've had a turnaround of fiscal management, fortunately, and built some reserves and if I recall, we've had increases every single year for both police and fire and I think rank and file, which at some point had not seen raises in a while. And again, we were looking at 10% cut across the board. Some people were going to lose their job or they were going to take 10% cuts. So, I'm curious to go back and look at this. You know, everyone thinks that we're being ugly. I want to tell you, in the real corporate world out here, people that get 2% or 3% a year are in the norm. That's, you know, just, that's a callout here that people are getting. To get 5%, 6%, 7% every single year, and I think we can go back and show that, you know, what's wrong with this picture? And yet, we're at the same time trying to take care of the rest of the employees that don't have a union and they've just been getting 3%. We'd love to pay them more money as well. So, can you, do you have any of that information as to what that history is? And what have we given?
Yeah. The '06, '07 budget, Matt alluded to it earlier, the police received 6% raise. Again, the city was not obligated to do that and that, the fire received 4% for firefighters, 6% for driver and 10% for captain and so on. The non-union received 5%. And '05, '06, police, fire and non-union received three and a half. In '04, '05, there were no increases for anyone except that merits and longevity raises were allowed. In '03, '04, 2% across the board. Part of that is very interesting because in '02, '03, 5% for the police, 5% for fire and 4% for non-union. '01, '02, 4.8% for police, 5.8 for fire and 3% for non-union. So, again, and it goes, that tracks. '00 to '01, 8.4 for police, 10.4 for fire and 7.3 for the non-union. 99 to 2,000, 4.1 for police, 3.4, 3.5 for fire and two and a half, 2.5 for non-union. So, the city has been very generous.
And a lot of that probably mirrors retail sales as to, you know, if we are able to generate more money from retail sales, then we may have money to give at a certain time. Of course, that, each year is a little bit different and as that flattens out, we have more demands and less and less revenue that spread around.
And again, I have made this comment in several meetings. You know, the rise in wages is outrunning our rise in sales taxes and I'm, you know, I'm getting the reputation of being a doctor no because I'm having to say, no, a lot of stuff, we don't have, we can't, we can't afford to keep it at its pace. We just can't do it. The trend is very clear. You know, I mean, we, when I first came in, we started doing pretty sophisticated trend analysis, including a polynomial as a check on our basic trend and it's pretty clear. You know, we're outrunning, the expenses are outrunning our revenue streams and again, we have a fiduciary responsibility to maintain.
And by way of background, the city did look, perform a wage survey when it was negotiating to make sure that we were negotiating in good faith. If we were asking for no concessions on behalf of the union, a wage survey indicated that we should offer roughly 4%. Again, 7% was offered, but we were asking for concessions from the union. So, and I can't emphasize enough that the arbitration panel and the voters of the city of Shawnee don't get to choose between the proposals. They have to choose one package or the other, one contract or the other. The city's contract was offering 7% in light of some of the concessions that were requested. You've heard the concessions here today, they're not that major concessions, all things considered, as compared to what's in the contract and what the city could have asked for concessions on. We're asking to eliminate one member of the board and replace him with another member from inside the department that the officer chooses. We're asking for three extra days on discipline as opposed to 48 hours. We're asking to tape record instead of bringing a mandatory court reporter. These are not serious and life-threatening decisions that we're asking the union to make. We're asking for certain concessions. We've offered good faith reasons for doing so and have offered a generous wage package to help compensate the officers for that request. Again, if it were just wages, we would have offered in good faith 4% and stopped there. Wasn't just wages, there were other things on the table. That's why 7% was put out on the table. We believe that the offer of the city in light of the 7%, the generous 7%, in light of the concessions they requested is imminently reasonable, but that's up for the voters. That's, but we made an offer that we believed in good faith was reasonable.
Plus the two and a half merit.
Two and a half for the majority of the officers for merit. And consider, we have five officers right now who will jump even further and bypass several, several raises and jump straight to corporal. Furthermore, that's going to bind us down the road for future officers who are able to exercise that incentive and jump to corporal sooner. They're going to get their raises faster, so it could end up costing the city more in the long run. There's a reason for that. It's a philosophy that the chief is trying to implement. It's a good philosophy. This is just the first step though in that.
Was the arbitration decision unanimous?
No. And actually, the, it bothers me as a lawyer, but there's not a whole lot we can do about it. The statute says that the arbitrators, you have three arbitrators, one selected by the union, one selected by the city, a third which is selected by a process of elimination between the union and the city. We request a list of arbitrators, we take turns striking names. The statute requires that a majority render a decision. The arbitrators never met. We know this because our interest arbitrator, the HR director from the city of Edmond, never got the call and actually found out about the arbitration award from us when we sent it to her because she was never consulted in the developing of that award. We are fairly certain that the union's arbitrator, though we don't know this for certain, but we're fairly certain the union's arbitrator didn't participate because his signature was not on the decision and the union's attorney called our office to find out what the award was because his arbitrator didn't know. And this was in the middle of the ice storm. He couldn't get into his office to get the facts. His arbitrator didn't know, so he called our office to find out for Makinkos. So, the arbitrator just made the decision for the majority on his own. Now, the union representative signed off on it, but there's no telling what the decision would have looked like had there actually been a free flow of discussion. I point this out because there was considerable discussion in that one arbitrator's decision, which was later signed off by the union's arbitrator, about the wage proposal and the wage survey that was done by the union. If you look at the arbitration transcript, which is an open record, the union president admitted he gave these numbers without consulting any of the actual figures from the cities. He took another survey that he found and simply took those numbers to be gospel and assumed that they were correct. He admitted he didn't look at the pay scales for the other cities and in fact, the pay scales indicated that his numbers were off. The HR director for the city of Edmond knew that, she knows that it's her job, she performs these wage surveys all the time. There's no telling what her impact could have meant to that arbitration decision had she been consulted. She wasn't, unfortunately, there's simply nothing by law that we can do about that. The arbitrator, the arbitrator did what he did and we have to live with that, but...
Do they typically converse in other?
Yes. The selection of an interest arbitrator can be a very important tool. You have the attorneys that come in, they argue the case, they put on witnesses. You have an interest arbitrator who's not necessarily there to argue your side. Now, as a reality, they probably are going to argue your side, but it's not unheard of for there to be a unanimous decision despite the fact that each side has picked their own arbitrator. Doesn't happen very often though. Their role isn't to be so much an advocate for the city's position as to listen to the city's evidence because they usually don't know what the city's evidence is ahead of time and to be able to put things and discuss the evidence in light of their duty as an arbitrator with the arbitration panel and have a, frankly, when you have this kind of discussion with people who are experienced, you end up with better awards. This, there was no discussion between a very experienced retired FOP member, Bill Young, who was the union's interest arbitrator, and a very experienced HR director from a very large city who has been an interest arbitrator numerous times. There's no telling what a free flow of dialogue between those two and the third arbitrator would have produced. We won't know that because they weren't consulted. All the statute requires is that majority come to a decision. I don't know how you develop a majority without at least talking to one other member, but again, that's just the way it happened and we have no recourse. Well, our only recourse is to submit it to a vote of the people. recourse. Well, our only recourse is to submit it to a vote of the people.
One other question on your negotiations in other communities. Do you typically see the executive board of a union in the negotiations, or is it just one individual or an attorney? Or what's the normal?
Usually, I, don't quote, well, you can quote me on this if you want, but I cannot recall outside of Shawnee seeing an attorney sit at the table for a union, whether it be fire or police. The city of Shawnee has a unique police union. It's the International Union of Police Associations. It's one of three locals within the state. Every other police union in the state which is organized is Fraternal Order of Police. They're very, very large. They have quite a few cities within the state. Anything except for Duncan, Lawton, and Shawnee is FOP. They have a state labor council who sends cops around to help bargain with the city officials. The International Association of Firefighters does the same thing. They have a statewide organization, the Professional Firefighters of Oklahoma, who, if a city wants, will send a PFFO area representative down to help you negotiate. So usually, you're dealing with another cop or another firefighter from another city. This can be very helpful, especially in light of the fact that it's usually the same guys that go around all the different departments, so you can develop a rapport and help better understand what their interests and their concerns are. Because there is not a large state organization for this union, they're pretty much left to their own resources, so they do bring in their attorney. And as you're probably aware, I know that there's been a request for our bill so that it can be published and show the citizens just how much money the city has spent here in Shawnee. We did a count today. I believe we've had in the past year, or since the chief came on, I believe we're at 14 grievances that have been pursued by the union, three unfair labor practice charges, most of which have been resolved. They encompass seven counts. We're going to interest arbitration. There was a petition by the FOP to come down here and organize, but it has been withdrawn for procedural reasons. We don't know where that's going to go from here. There's been a whole host of work that has gone in from our firm to this department. On average, according to the FMCS, which is the arbitration service which provides the list of arbitrators, according to their regional chairman, Adam Dallas, arbitration costs each party roughly $3,000 to $5,000. There's significant cost to pursuing these. Now, that's not to say the union is not well within their rights to pursue it, but there's been a lack of dialogue here about some of these issues. By way of example, we pursued all the way to arbitra, well, we didn't pursue. The union pursued all the way to arbitration, an issue where they wanted to be able to post things on locker room doors. The contract says they have a right to post things on a bulletin board. Now, in all fairness, in the past, the bulletin board had been removed, and the prior chief had allowed them to simply post on the locker room door. Chief moved a, what was it, 4-foot by 8-foot bulletin board right next to the locker room door so they could post on it. They started posting on that and the locker room door. We told them they couldn't do that because the contract gave them the right to post on the bulletin board. There's a 4-foot by 8-foot bulletin board right next to it. That was taken all the way through the grievance, through the arbitration process, with the city won the arbitration. And frankly, the arbitrator shook his head at the end of the arbitration here, and I believe his comment was, "I wish you guys could just talk."
And that was at a cost of how much?
I don't know the exact cost of that one. My guess is it would probably be about $5,000. And again, the city's only option is either to take that all the way to pursue its right to arbitration, or to acquiesce to the union and set a precedent. So when the union files agreements, we either have to assert our rights, the city has to assert its rights, or give up. The city has chosen to assert its rights where it felt, it has felt its rights, where it has the right to do something. This is perhaps why the union has withdrawn before it gets all the way to that process and they have to pay their attorney to go through the process. I think we're at six of the 14 were withdrawn after they were filed before the arbitration. So, point being, this is a very active department. 14 grievances, three unfair labor practices, one lawsuit right now challenging an arbitration award, and interest arbitration, as well as research that went into a petition to bring the FOP in that the city had to respond to until it was withdrawn. So I have no doubt that the union, the union has a right to our bills. It's an open record. I have no doubt that there will be, that will be passed off as though the city spent that much money on the contract. Contract was the tip of the iceberg on this. It's the arbitrations and the other issues which really require the time.
A lack of communication is causing us to spend more money as a city.
Well, that was the arbitrator, that was the arbitrator's statement. He, the bulletin board grievance really was, well, the arbitrator was shaking his head at the end of it. He ruled in our favor, and he simply shook his head and said he kind of wished we could get together and talk. The city is ready, willing, and able to talk, but as I've told you, during the negotiations, we asked for an explanation of what their points were. I think the chief is ready to give you some input. We asked for some clarification as to why they were concerned about our proposals. Until we walked into the interest arbitration, we had no idea what they were going to argue, because there was no discussion at the table about what their concerns were, outside of, we prefer the old contract language.
Chief, how much is it costing the city?
It's costing a great deal. A lot of waste of time. I have a stack behind my desk about that high of legal documents that have been generated, and there's several reasons for that. But talking about communication, to give you an example, I've asked to talk to the union president, Ken King, a couple of weeks ago, and he said, "I'm unable to discuss union business with you at this time. I'll have to get back with you sometime this week of the 7th." I've never heard of such a thing. I was a member of the IUPA, which is the same union here, back in Lawton. For 27 years, I was a union member. We never were that arrogant to tell the chief of police that we're not going to sit down and talk to you. Or we were that arrogant to think that we were going to manage the department for the chief. We were interested in wages, you know, in our rights and grievance processes and benefits. But we didn't get into the nitty-gritty detail of saying that, "We're going to Scotch Tape something up on the bathroom door, chief, and I know you're remodeling this place and trying to make it a professional environment, but we want to Scotch Tape that up," instead of using a bulletin board inches away, that's 4-foot by 8-foot to put their documents up. I said, "The main reason is to communicate with the membership." It was about power. It's about who's running the department, whether it's going to be the union or it's going to be managed by the chief of police. And that's part of this decision that folks need to decide also. But no, it's cost a lot of money and a lot of time and a lot of effort. And the philosophy behind some of that, too, is to keep throwing the paperwork, do these legal documents, hoping that I will get tired and I will bail, and leave it to the next poor soul. But I'll say this in front of everybody today. I'm not going anywhere. I'm going to stay right here. I've invested in this community. My family has invested. And I brought an individual that's, that came from Lawton that was a union member since he was 16. And what we both watched is the process of the attorney for the union, Doug Veneer, and the union president that has perverted the union process. It's been going on a long time, and I'm very happy about tonight's meeting to start shedding some, shedding some light on this operation.
Sir, I have a question. Bottom line here, as I'm understanding, is communications, right? How about in the ranks? How about in the police officers themselves?
Just by way of a point, the union membership, we think, knows what's going on here, knows the details of the proposals, because the union president did testify under oath that the membership got the proposals and knows all the proposals of the city and all the proposals of the union, and has unanimously rejected the city's proposals and unanimously supports the union proposals. So if there's any question, if there is any attempt to communicate by the union with the commission, you should know that the union president has testified that they've all received these proposals, had discussions, unanimously rejected them. We have evidence to the contrary, but that's the sworn testament.
Maybe after tonight they'll all know.
Hopefully, hopefully. Anyways.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Appreciate your indulgence. I know that that was kind of long and windy, and, but this is very important to this community. And again, it's our job and responsibility to monitor the resources and the citizens' money. And we will do that, and we will continue to communicate and educate the citizens of our community on what we think the issues are, and again, the facts, not just what we think, but really what the facts are. So I thank both of you guys. Appreciate it. Okay, number six, Item 2C. Consider action taken on bids received from emergency, public improvement projects, cleanup of ice storm debris, and a budget amendment and appropriation of available fund balance that is attached to that.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Don Lynch, Emergency Management Director. With your indulgence, what I'd like to do is talk about the public assistance declaration process and where we're at with the debris removal contract, allow you to vote on Item 2C, and I have a few comments relating to individual assistance that I'd like to bring you up to date with as well. Referring to pages 78 through 88 in your agenda packet, based upon the disaster declaration that Dr. Collard signed, we submitted a request to the state and the Federal Emergency Management Agency for public assistance following the president's disaster declaration, which authorized public assistance for Potawatomi County and several other counties in our state. We had our first meeting with the FEMA and state representatives last week. That's called an applicant's briefing. Basically, what they do is make sure that they have all of the contact information for the various entities who might be requesting public assistance, go briefly over the program, some of the rules, and then let us know what will be the next step in the process. The next step in that process for us will be to have a meeting to go over the rules for public assistance. It's called a kickoff meeting with our specific project officers from FEMA and the state who are assigned to work our case with them. As of today, the public assistance officers who are working in the joint field office have been on board and are putting together their organizational charts, so we still, as of today, do not have a project officer assigned to us. That doesn't prevent us from going ahead and doing the work that we need to do. We just need to make sure that we keep our records. And in order to make sure that we do that, we have scheduled an internal meeting with representatives from all of our city departments for tomorrow afternoon, and the emergency management office will be going over how to do that record-keeping internally, so we have that taken care of so that we can continue that process. After we have our kickoff meeting, then there will be a project officer who will come out, write up an estimate of the work that is required, scope of work, and we'll put a dollar estimate to that figure. And that depends upon what that is, how we will proceed. So I'll give you an update to that process in the future meetings and how we're going to go with that. Question?
So you're telling me that as part of the scope of work, that staff time can be considered in that?
If it's overtime.
If it is overtime. Under public assistance rules for emergency work and for debris removal, which is what we have the declaration for, overtime for forced account labor, that is our staff, overtime is an eligible reimbursable option. All of the...
Straight time's not.
Straight time is not. The equipment time and supplies that are utilized are acceptable as well. So regular time for equipment that's dedicated to that emergency work or debris removal would be eligible. It has to be doing debris work. So it's not off grading streets or, you know, doing other things. It's dedicated to that event. So, but as far as labor goes, it's only overtime that's eligible under public assistance for forced account labor. That's part of the reason, in addition to the fact that looking at the equipment that we had in-house, the ability with our forced account and everything else that needs to be done in the city continues to go on. You know, the day-to-day work doesn't stop as you're doing emergency recovery. The decision was made, and the recommendation was brought forward to go ahead and sign a contract for debris removal. And we had done that. We advertised for bids, and you see that information in your packet here, beginning on page 78, where we made a notice to bidders. We had a pre-bid meeting that was mandatory for anybody who wanted to submit a bid. We went over the terms and conditions of the contract with those potential bidders, gave them an opportunity to ask any questions that they have of us. We had several staff members involved in that process. Bids were received and opened, and the lowest bid came in from Tompkins and Company. And this is an estimate. And we had to, in order to do the notice to bidders, we had to come up with some sort of figure of this is how much debris we think's out there. It may very well go up. It could be a little bit less as we get to it, but our best estimate for purposes of contracting was the amount that we put in the bid specifications. And so...
Twenty-five minutes.
Twenty-five, correct. 2,500 tons was the amount that we chose for the bid specifications. The bid that came in to do that work is $267,500. And for Tompkins and Company is a little bid. We anticipate that there probably will be some additional over and above that 25 tons, and so we asked them to give us a per-ton price figured in that as part of their bid as well. That's why we came to you this evening with the request to transfer $300,000 into this account to pay for the contract cost. All of the eligible work under the FEMA programs are reimbursement basis. We have to expend the money upfront, and then we get up to 87.5% back for all the eligible debris that's being removed. And so 75% of that's federal, 12.5% is state funds, and then 12.5% would be our share as the local applicant.
We pay this now?
We pay the entire cost upfront. We get reimbursed for the 87.5%.
Like a year from now or...
Yeah, whenever they get around to it.
I have a hypothetical question for you, Don.
Okay.
On this list of, what do you have here, nine or 10, 10 bids?
Correct.
You have already awarded or recommending Tompkins and Company?
We've already awarded to Tompkins and Company.
You've awarded, okay.
And they're, and they're ready to begin work.
Well, hypothetically, if we, the highest bid was 830,000.
Correct.
So the government's going to pay 87.5%.
Of the 267,000.
Round it off, say a million dollars to clean up the whole city.
Right.
Government's going to pay 750,000.
That's correct.
And we got the remaining 250,000.
We're stuck for 12.5%.
Wait a minute.
No, no.
Sorry, I don't understand your question.
We need 300,000 to pay a $267,000 bill.
I'm sorry, sir. I'm still not understanding.
Okay, we have to expend...
I'm using hypothetical. I'm rounding off.
Okay. If their amount is 300,000, it was 267,000, we're asking for a little cushion in there because we think that the debris estimate may go a little higher. We have to pay that entire amount upfront and pay Tompkins and Company as part of our contract, and then we submit to FEMA for reimbursement. They will reimburse us 87.5% of whatever we expended on that contract, whether that's 267,000, 300,000, 325. That goes back into general fund.
The money from FEMA will go back, FEMA will go back into the general fund.
Yes, sir. It's coming out of ending balances, and the reimbursements will go back into the general fund. But if you figure a $300,000 contract, 12.5% is 37.5, if I read my math wrong.
Correct.
Do we have some particulars on the contract? What are they going to pick up and where are they not going to?
Oh, that's a good question. If you want to address the actual pickup procedure.
Sure.
Can we, can I just ask a couple of financial questions before we get to what the procedure is?
Give it up.
Are we obligated for the 267,000, or are we obligated for the number of tons at $107 a ton?
We're the number of tons.
Okay, so it is a unit ton.
It is a unit price contract.
Okay, okay. So we are obligating ourselves for $107 per ton is what we are right here.
Correct.
My next question is probably what Commissioner Schran was trying to get to. The difference between the 267 estimate here and the 300,000 that's in our packet here is...
A fudge factor that we put into it because, so that we can...
If it goes over.
If the number of tons goes above what we estimated, we'll have the money to cover that.
Okay. That does not include, then, any overtime or equipment charges that we as a city...
That's correct, and that's what, that's the next point I want to get to.
Okay, okay.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Because we are choosing a contract to do the debris removal and not forced account labor, we have to provide monitors for that contract. It's in our best interest to provide monitors to make sure that there's no fraud, waste, or abuse for that, but we also have to for FEMA's regulations.
And we don't want to jeopardize our reimbursement.
We don't want to jeopardize our reimbursement. We want to make sure that it is all eligible debris and that it's all meets the guidelines and specifications in order to receive that reimbursement. So initially, what we propose to do, what we have put together, is to utilize forced account labor, and there will be some overtime involved.
Please define again what forced account...
Forced account labor are our city employees.
On overtime.
On overtime, to monitor the initial debris removal from the three collection points that we had. the airport, the parking lot, and Dockry Park. That are the three areas that we really need to get debris moving from that are fixed sites that we can utilize, a monitor at that location, and a monitor at our dump site. So that's basically two people on overtime to monitor that. There may be some regular time involved, but we're going to limit that as much as possible. But that way, we can go ahead and start the process. People who have the ability to continue to bring the debris from their yard to Dockry Park to be dumped can continue to do that, so we're not holding back anybody from removing the debris from their yard if they have the ability to do that. We want to start with that process. And then secondly, we want to do a request for proposals for a monitoring company to see if we can get, there are companies out there who follow disasters, who provide the service of providing trained monitors on the client's behalf to stand out there and monitor the debris removal process. So we want to, for each crew, we have to have a monitor at each loading site. The purpose for that being, we want to make sure that that debris is eligible, that if we just monitored at the dump, well, they could bring it in from anywhere, we wouldn't know if it's city's debris, or county debris, or whoever's debris. So we have to monitor it at the site where it's loaded, have to monitor it at the site where it's dumped and going to be ground. So we'll have to have, that the company that was doing the debris removal said they would have 20 crews available to come in and take care of the city, which means they can get it cleaned up in a fairly rapid manner. But that means we will have to put 20 monitors out there, one with each of those crews and one at the dump site. So, our recommendation is we don't have the forced account city employees to do all that, particularly on overtime situation, because a lot of the work will be eight to five Monday through Friday. So we would like to go out and procure the services of an outside monitoring firm to come in and monitor that on our behalf.
Because we're going to work seven days a week.
We're going to work seven days a week, basically sunup to sundown.
Do you have priorities?
We don't, we have not established priority areas of the city yet, that's something that we still have left to do with the contractor. But basically with 20 crews, they're going to be, they have sector the city, including the area by the lakes, down to manageable sizes that they'll be able to get on very quickly.
What about the handicaps?
I'll get to that in just a second.
If I understand correctly, they're going to clean up the dump sites first?
They're going to clean up the dump sites first, because we can monitor that with forced account and go ahead and get that underway.
And what's the timeline on cleaning up the dump sites?
We don't know yet, we're going to give an estimate on how long it will take to do that. I would suspect it'll take maybe a week to do that, which gives us a week to get monitors onboard and ready to go. Or at least our initial goal is to get a monitoring proposals in this week, be able to turn that, train those people next week, and be ready two weeks from now to hit the streets.
What process are they going to use to clean up the dump sites?
The same process that we will use on the collection. They will have a loading truck with a grappling hook or a front-end loader or whatever to pick up the debris, put it in a dump truck. The dump truck will go to our dump site, will be weighed as it goes into the dump site, dump the debris, which they will grind at the, the contractor's choice is to grind at the dump site, which is better for them, rather than hauling chips back and forth, and that's fine, because we're doing a per-ton. So we'll weigh the truck when it comes in, weigh the truck when it comes out, and the difference will be obviously then the debris, that's why we need a monitor at both of those locations. Question?
Can you clarify for everyone, why are we going to hire monitors?
Yes, we are hiring the monitors because it's required, number one, under the FEMA regulations.
Right.
In order to be reimbursed, we have to prove that it's eligible debris and that it's our debris. And the way that we do that is we have people out there saying, yes, this came from the 300 block, for instance, of North Union. We were there, we saw it, I sign on a ticket that says this truck was full at such-and-such time on such-and-such date, left the 300 block of North Union. That monitor keeps a copy of the ticket, gives three copies of the ticket to the truck driver. Truck driver gets in the truck, goes to the dump site, the truck is weighed when it comes in, dumps its load, weighed when it comes out, that information is recorded on the load ticket. The monitor at the dump site has to sign off on it, again, the truck driver has to sign off on it, and we verify that the truck, of course, it doesn't matter, but we want to verify that the truck is empty, that it's the same truck that went in, that's coming out, and all that information. And then we keep, the monitor at the dump site keeps a ticket, sends two copies of the ticket back with the driver, the driver turns it in to the contractor, contractor gets to keep a copy of the ticket, they send us a copy of the ticket with their invoice, and we match up ticket number, ticket number, ticket number, and it all has to be there in order to receive the payment.
What dump site will we be using?
The other issue, the dump site we're going to be using is the question, we still have to negotiate that, and that's one of the things that Mr. Krawicki and I are going to be working on tomorrow. Right now, we think that it's going to be the Allied Waste Facility at Earl's Row. We had initially planned on...
The one that's only open every other Saturday for six?
But they have agreed in an email to make it available to us all day, seven days a week.
But how long?
Till we get done.
And at what charge?
At $8 a ton for a tipping fee.
Has any thought been given?
Which is an eligible expense.
Any thought been given to burning it?
Yes. If you burn it, there are a whole lot of other regulations that you have to deal with. Because of the way that we let the contract, the contract was for grinding and removal, if we choose to go back and burn now, then we need to throw out all the contracts and rebid the entire process, because it's a substantial change to the terms of the contract that we initiated, so we felt like, plus then you have the environmental issues that you have to deal with as well.
Well, you've covered the three dump sites pretty good, what about the rest of the city, where most of the limbs are now?
Exactly. The goal is...
What are the restrictions? The people want to know what they can put out.
Absolutely. Only vegetative debris, that is tree limbs. No construction debris, no household hazardous waste, no trash, anything like that, just vegetative debris is all that will be removed from the city's right-of-way next to the street.
Any limit on size?
No limit on size, basically, if they can pick it up with a grappling hook and get it in a truck, they'll get it out of there.
Is there some of the elderly or handicapped that cannot get matched that way?
We, thank you very much. We asked for the, yes, Commissioner O'Neill's question. We asked for people who were in that predicament, that were elderly, infirmed, single parents with children who could not get to the debris because of taking care of their children, widowed persons, to call and register with a hotline for us, and we have 250 of those people on a list. We ask for the church organizations and the community organizations to step up and provide crews to assist with that debris. We're also contacted the state office and national voluntary organizations who assist in these types of disasters. We're going to be providing the list to them as well. It's going to take a little while to get to that, through that whole 250, but we're working our way through that list, starting with the first people, going up to the latest people who have registered on the list. We did close the hotline number, but if anybody's got any questions, they can call the emergency management office, 878-1650. We would love for anybody who would like to help with the debris process removal, that can go out with a chainsaw or other equipment to help remove that, to call as well, we're really falling short on the numbers of people stepping up to help remove the debris. Like to see a lot more of those in the community.
You said get the debris?
Get the debris to the street.
I understand that, but people that have their own trucks and own vehicles that's moving more than just debris out there that moves, those things that they had stored beforehand.
We will not take that. We will not take that. It has to be only vegetative debris.
Does the sites know that now?
The sites know that.
Okay.
Absolutely. We're not taking trash, we're not taking household hazardous waste, good question, we're not taking construction debris. I will say this, in addition to the fact of what we've talked about in two weeks, perhaps being able to get around to the locations within the city, it's going to cost the city money to do that. Okay? If people can get their debris to the dump site and get their neighbors' debris to the dump site, then that's going to save the city some money, because we won't have to send a crew down the street and pick it up and haul it a further distance to the dumping point. So, I just want to encourage everybody who can get it to a debris management site, and the only one that's open now is Dockry Park, because the other two locations are full. If you can get it to one of those sites, it's going to save us money in the long run if you can help us do that.
And once again, Allied Waste on Wednesdays will pick up yard...
Yard waste. That's correct.
So take all your old trash cans that you still have around, put your tree limbs in there on Wednesdays and let them earn their money under the contract.
Absolutely.
What are the dimensions of the...
Great part, great point.
Don, what's the dimensions of the bundle that the Allied would pick up? Tony's not here.
Tony's not here, and I'm sorry.
Three feet, isn't it like three feet?
Nothing bigger than 18 inches in diameter, and I believe it's three feet long.
Right. And you know what, some barns will man your trash cans, they double.
I bundled some up about six foot long, but I tied them, so...
Yeah, it makes it easier to pick up if they do that.
All right. Can I make a couple of points here? We analyzed this quite a bit, talked to a lot of other cities, and of course FEMA and Don with his expertise in this area. On a couple of points, one, we need to decide which metric, whether it's going to be tonnage or yardage. Well, yardage is almost impossible to quantify on this, that's the reason we went with tonnage, and it's easier to manage. That question has been asked, I wanted to clarify. The other is, why are we taking this to the landfill? We thought about putting it in different places, the mulch, which is what's going to take place. Of course, we've already mulched some, and there's a nice pile of mulch at the yellow building north of Big Lots on Independence that anybody can have. They can pull in there and get it, and like my wife has told me, I've got an assignment to get some of that too, okay? But, there's an enormous amount, okay? And we thought about putting it maybe at the North Airport property. The problem with that is that when that stuff dries out, it serves as tinder for fires.
Huge fire hazard.
And so we could not take that risk, and that's the reason we're going ahead and landfilling it.
Couple of questions.
So the additional, okay, go ahead, and then I'll just recap real quickly.
Is the monitor service cost reimbursable?
Yes, ma'am. Again, at the same rate, 75% federal, 12.5% state, 12.5% local.
So that will, once you have that contract, you'll come back with another budget amendment in order to approve for that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, for that amount.
Okay. I might also say that my understanding is, we wouldn't be able to do this unless we had a fund balance to use right now, because we are using our funds right now until FEMA can reimburse us.
You're absolutely correct.
And there was a time that this city did not have a fund balance that could even afford this amount. And we get a lot of pressure for having a fund balance at all. We talk about emergencies, and this is one of those instances where having a fund balance, where we can manage this, is a really, really good thing. I'm telling you, there are times we would not have had this.
That's right.
That's a really important question.
I appreciate you making that point.
Procedural question. The agenda item says consider action. Does the staff then need additional authorization for this monitoring contract, or was it included in the original motion to handle this? Maybe I could ask John Cannabang that. When we got the initial authorization, it was going to be the whole thing, but I want to make sure we're precisely correct here. Technically, it was me two contracts, in other words. The original motion that was made before authorized staff to go ahead and let this one, which we've done, but it was not specifically noted as to the monitoring contract.
Have we not received bids from them?
No, we have not.
No.
The agenda item says action, I think we're seeing.
Okay, so then, do we need, I mean, we've got a work session next Monday, is it, would it be appropriate then to put on there to approve, Don?
To authorize staff to approve.
And I want to make sure we're doing this correctly.
Got it.
Is that okay?
Well, she has to redo our agenda, but yeah.
Sorry.
If FEMA requires it...
FEMA does require it.
Okay.
Sorry?
As part of going out for a contract for debris removal, if part of that process requires by FEMA to have monitors, would that not be part of the package?
That's what I was thinking.
Even though you have to do it in two bids, that was just trying.
Yeah. I think an argument could be made, maybe do you have any opinion on that one, Kelly and Snowboard?
Well, after the first, we were trying to figure out, we were working with the FEMA Department, we were looking at, do we have to, do we have to, do we have to require that, just like you all, that I'm like, oh, she requires that, so they really are not two separate things?
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I'll speak to John, but I think we can go, I think it would be safer to go for...
Yeah, we just need to cover the point.
Yeah. It won't throw us that much farther behind, so, just a few days is on, so, okay. We'll put that on the agenda for Monday night, thank you for bringing that up, okay. So, yeah, once again, this is, the budget amendment that we're asking for tonight is to cover the costs that we anticipate will be expended on the debris removal contract. We will still need to do a contract for monitoring and bring that forward, and then ask you for a budget amendment to cover those costs. That would be reimbursable for all the eligible expenses at 87.5% under the FEMA state guidelines. As soon as we have those in place, we can proceed, and we'll keep our records, and then as we go through the process, when the FEMA staff comes onboard, we'll start the process of writing the paperwork up to start that reimbursement.
And it's acceptable to have as a revenue stream, grant revenue from FEMA?
Yes, we specifically asked multiple offers, and also Kelly and I were considering that, and we got their information, and we specifically said that, so we might not even receive the money in this business.
Right.
That would be correctly accounted for.
It's anticipated that we will receive it at this point.
Okay. And is that because we also have the declaration and all the other things in place so that we qualify?
Yes.
To meet the reimbursement?
To meet the requirement, yes.
Okay.
Have all that in place.
Okay.
The one other thing that we would ask is that if everybody can, who is going to be bringing debris to the curb, if they can have it by January 31st, that would be, since our starting point to make the pass through the city begins in about two weeks, that will give us some time to do that.
Are you going to make more than one pass?
Yes, we'll probably make two passes.
Okay.
I really hate to say that, because somebody will say, well, I'll wait the second pass to put my stuff out there. The idea is, please, if you can get it out there, get it out there now, but there will be a grace period in there where if we can't get it, like for the people on the 250 list, it's going to take us some time to get it to that, then we'll be able to go back, so yes, they'll be making a second pass through the city.
And there are some people who have such a quantity that...
Absolutely. You take a little bit now and get half of it later.
They get the other stuff down, they don't have enough frontage to put it all on.
You bet, absolutely.
I don't have any more room in front of me.
Yeah.
There is another, there is another point, you know, this is going to be an imperfect process. It's a highly unusual event, I mean, it's the worst in state history. So we just ask for patience, you know, we'll do the best we can, there'll be some glitches, and we'll work through all these things, you know, so...
There was one issue we talked about a couple of weeks ago, was the branches in the trees that are broken or hanging, Don, splintered.
We're still trying to get that clarification from FEMA on that process. We're having a debris monitoring training on Wednesday, and we'll have that issue clarified for us, to have got that process. But basically, they'll have to be identified, be considered in the right of way, and be eligible, and we'll have to prove that, so we'll have to take pictures probably, and very detailed logs of where that was, and the cost of removing that, so...
A lot of it was a real dangerous...
Absolutely.
Yeah, there's some liability issues here that we have to be careful with. Again, this is going to be an imperfect process, and it's going to take us some time, and we will post all this stuff on our website, as well as, of course, Channel 30, and keep the news media informed as well.
I think all the questions that I've been asked by the voters of citizens have been
And we've had a lot of help with all the city employees through this process, so.
Do we need to approve two C from the considering?
We have to do that. Do we need another motion? I mean, do we need to consider anything on six? How about if we make a motion to approve two C, which is the budget amendment for the cleanup debris, and to affirm the bid award made by the city to-
Tompkins.
Tompkins.
And Company.
Tompkins and Company.
One second. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
One second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson, second by Commissioner Strand. Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Strand?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Yeah.
Cole?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you. Just quickly, on the individual assistance process, and we're going through, there's been a FEMA state team touring various, the heavier-hit parts of the state, doing the preliminary damage assessment for an individual assistance disaster request that is expected to go up to the president later this week. They're typing that up for the governor's signature today, and that should be delivered to Washington by the end of the week, and then we hope to hear something very quickly as it relates to that. So, hopefully, there'll be some assistance coming forward for the individual damage and losses that were out there.
Right behind New Orleans, right?
Somewhere, I don't know.
Quick question. I think I heard on the news a few weeks ago that two thousand and seven, that Oklahoma had more presidential disaster declarations than any state in history.
That's correct. We had eight presidential disaster declarations in the state of Oklahoma in two thousand and seven, more than any other state, surpassing Florida, surpassing Texas, surpassing all the Gulf states, eight presidential disaster declarations. And we've had five of those in Potawatomi County. We were glad to see the new year come and go, and we hope that things are a little quieter this year.
We know how to celebrate a centennial.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think we ought to pass a resolution for a quieter year.
So, I think that would be wonderful. I just want to plead one more time, civic organizations, families, church groups, if you can help us, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, service clubs, if you can help us with the two-hundred-and-fifty list, we would appreciate it.
They do need permission to go on private property, right?
Well, exactly, and that's going to be my next question, is-
They're doing it-
How do we ensure that, I mean, do you go back and tell private citizen, hey, the Stevens family is going to be at your house on Saturday?
Yes, yes.
So, we're coordinating that, because my concern is-
I don't want people showing up and saying, "Here I am, I'm here to remove your debris," and then going in and committing a crime. No, we are coordinating that. Your case has been assigned to, and they will contact you to set up the time when they're arriving, so.
And obviously, if they ask for money, then they're not from-
Exactly, don't give them money.
You commit that crime.
And number two, we did ask somebody, we did have somebody who came in and asked for a copy of that list, so they could go out and solicit, and I said, "No, we're not going to do that."
There were several individuals and a couple pickup trucks today working our neighborhood. I went out and talked, they wanted twenty-five dollars a load, and I said, "Well, I'm going to wait on the city and see what happens."
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Where you going? Hey, we're not done yet. You're the one that wanted to meet late.
Yeah.
Come on. What's up with that? Okay, number seven.
Yeah.
Consider progress made on improvements to property located at ten oh five North Union. Owner Annette Davis deferred from ten one of oh seven.
Okay, I'm Mike Cox, I'm the chief code official, I'm here to give a report on this house. Just, this piece of property, to bring you up to speed, was a public nuisance that we heard back in the planning department in August of oh six, and it was brought to y'all in December of oh six for consideration to allow the person to have an opportunity to rehabilitate the house. They did, at that particular point in time, do a lot of cleaning of the property. There was an accessory structure that had fallen, and fallen over on the neighbor's property, and that was all cleaned up and cleared, a lot of trash and debris was removed, and the structure was secured. The owner of the property asked for time, they decided that they didn't really have the financial ability at that time to rehabilitate the house, it's a large house, and there was a lot of damage to it, so they asked the commission if y'all would give them time so that they could get a real estate company to come in and perhaps sell the property rather than carrying the house down. The basic structure is structurally secure, it can be rehabilitated, it is, again, a large house, and it will take a lot to rehab this house. We have made an inspection recently on the house, the house is secure, we haven't had any recent complaints on it, there is no trash and debris being brought at that location by anybody, we are keeping an eye on it. I don't know, is Ms. Davis here?
Uh, it's my mother.
It's your mother? Is there anything that you would like to say? I know the house is up for sale.
We had offers for five thousand, twenty thousand, we're asking, we have a price of forty-five, but it fell through.
Shall we ever come up to the mic?
Yes, come on up here.
My name's Holly Johnson, Annette Davis is my mother, Lane Davis is my brother. He's the one that usually comes up here, he's the big guy.
Yeah.
He's at work tonight, I'm sorry he couldn't be here tonight. We've had offers on the house, we've had one for five thousand dollars, and we've added up to forty-five. We accepted the forty-five thousand dollar offer, but like I said, it fell through the day after Christmas. So, we stuck on the market, and we are waiting for somebody to buy it.
Like I said, the house is secured, and we have been keeping an eye on it, we haven't received any further complaints on it, so, you know, there's a lot of houses for sale right now, and this thing's going to be a little bit rough to sell because it is, you know, in condition of seeing-
Fixer-upper.
Yeah, it's going to, it's a real fixer-upper.
It is, but it's one of the fresh mansions of Shawnee, built in nineteen twenty-eight. The house has an amazing history on it.
Do you still have it for sale through the company that we talked about here a while back? And I was concerned about the contract date on the application for selling. Are you still dealing with the same people?
We're still dealing with, Jesse Cravens has it listed for us.
Okay.
It's in three twenty-one.
Okay.
Because that's the one that, I haven't been at these meetings, is that the one that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
Do you know how long that contract's due for?
No, I don't, I think it's up to a year, I do believe it is up to a year.
Okay.
And then we'll just go back and renegotiate and say, "No, we want to keep it on the market."
Well, it did look like somebody had taken the part of the tree that fell on the sign and got the sign back up and got that to bring it to the side.
The sign's back up, the tree's to the side, yes.
Up by the curb.
Yes, it is.
Already picked up.
Waiting, occasionally.
Yeah, I hate to see it. I had someone ask me the other day, they had went on, they saw it online, and they said, "Okay, what's wrong with this big, nice house, three-story house for forty thousand dollars?" And I said, "Well, it just needs some TLC," you know? That's all.
A lot of money, and then a lot of love.
It's a, I mean, it is, it's a nice-looking house.
It is beautiful.
So.
I'd like to go ahead and defer another ninety days and let them continue with it and see what happens, because I passed by there, and I see that it's, you know, there's not anything-
It's not a big eyesore.
No, it's not anything that I would be concerned about with that house at all, so I make a motion, we just give them another ninety days and move on.
Thank you.
There are homes that are occupied in Shawnee that- Well, and you- I'm sorry, I was, yeah, it's been cleaned up. This homeowner has complied with everything that we've asked for, and because of that, I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner Holt, second by Vice Mayor Peterson, to defer for ninety more days. Call roll, please.
Cole?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Aviel?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye. All right. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a request for a short break, are you guys interested in that?
Yes.
It's got five minutes or so.
Okay.
Okay, we'll recess for a short break.
Number eight, public hearing and considered an ordinance to rezone property at 2025 East MacArthur from A1 Agricultural to C3 Commercial Automotive and Recreation for commercial use deferred from 12/17/07, applicant Robert and Alethea Woodmore. Call our public hearing open, staff report.
Yes, P-3207 actually was on the December Planning Commission Council meeting. The Planning Commission continued it to the January meeting and we talked again during that time. The applicant has hired an engineer and they're doing a site plan and they're going to come back with a layout and proposal which they have not done so at this point in time. And so we had asked the Planning Commission to continue the item until the February 6th meeting and based on that date, City Commission would have to continue this item to the February 17th meeting. We do have a meeting with the applicant and his engineer on this Wednesday to see what they have come forward with. We're not sure the applicant really understands the full requirements and development process of all the items such as sewer, water, and sidewalks. We want to be sure that they understand the full development requirements of the site and then from there we'll go forward. We hope it will be heard on the February 6th docket. However, they do not submit all of the proper information in the full site plan, there's a possibility it could go beyond that. We've talked about the possibility of even re-notifying once we receive that submission to the neighbors that are on our notification list so they know that this is up again and there has been a change in the application. And we've talked about that internally in the staff department to do that.
Okay.
Salute.
Is that a motion?
Yeah.
Was that a motion?
We happened to have been at the planning meeting on this one, so.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Continue the public hearing.
Continue. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Holt and seconded by Commissioner O'Neill. Call roll, please.
Holt.
Aye.
O'Neill.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, number nine, public hearing and considered an ordinance to rezone property at 712 East Highland from R1 Residential to C3 Automotive Commercial and Recreation, applicant John Uiger, OBO Shawnee Auto Mall.
This item also was continued from the Planning Commission meeting and continued to the February 6th meeting. The site is not enough square feet, is only a little over 4,000 square feet, does not meet the site requirements for C3, C1, or C2 zoning. And there are other things that have to happen in order for it to be either incorporated into the property that the applicant owns, which is the auto mall just south of the pink site, or some other option. And one of the options discussed was a PUD at the Planning Commission. But at this point, it's being continued to the February 6th Planning Commission meeting and recommend this be continued to the February 17th City Commission meeting. We're also meeting with the applicant on Wednesday to discuss the options on this site. If you have any familiarity with the site, it was a residential structure that was torn down recently and they put in gravel, made the entire frontage a driveway and put a stockade fence in and several of those things are not according to our codes. And of course, it's not zoned properly, so there are several issues with this property. So recommendations to the City Commission, February 17th meeting date.
Another deferral. A move to defer? You must be one who watched that football game. Okay. Motion to defer.
Second.
By Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Holt. Call roll, please.
Young.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
O'Neill.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Motion carries, okay, thanks. Number 10, public hearing and considered an ordinance to approve a conditional use permit at 31300 Homer Lane Road to allow for a mobile home in A1 Agricultural District, applicant Jeff and Justine Price. Public hearing open, staff report.
This is a area in the northwest part of the city, is 80 acres, currently zoned to A1. The applicant has asked for a mobile home to be located on this 80 acres. As a conditional use permit, it can be located there. Their long-range plans are to build a home there, but timing could be anytime, I guess, six months, six years, whatever their timing is. But the conditional use permit allows us to approve this and to approve some conditions which we have proposed to the Planning Commission, five conditions for, I wish I could move that over so you can't see the dots right there, but there's five conditions that in the past, the Planning Commission and the City Commission have applied to mobile homes being conditional use permits in the A1. And these are the five which you have on your staff report. On your handout on page six, there is one condition which is number three that we would like to change a bit after discussion of the Planning Commission. There were some questions of why was there requirement for the fairly expensive concrete footing and foundation? In discussing this with the permit department and the inspectors, they weren't sure either why this is required. Our current code requires that the foundations be built according to the manufacturer's requirements and that all of the mobile homes that we allow at the lake and in other areas are all under that requirement rather than the requirement that was originally listed. So we would like to, if you cannot read that one, on page six of the handout I gave you, there is a paragraph that says "out." That was the original condition we'd like to put in the condition that says, "Number three, foundation or footings that are required as per the Shawnee Building Code, i.e. as per the manufacturer's installation instructions," because that's what our current building code requires. And so staff recommends approval of conditional use permit for the mobile home park in the A1, subject to the five conditions and changing out the number three to the one I just read.
Anyone wish to speak for or against closed public hearing, entertain a motion?
A move to accept staff recommendation.
Motion by Commissioner Young.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Peterson, read the title, please.
In order concerning the zoning classification, the following described property located in Portland, City Shawnee Auto Mall, two-way, eastbound, southwest corner of Section 9, Council of San Jorge, West Philly, in the area of Portland, County. For reported fact, there is a zoning property from A1 Agricultural to A1P Agricultural, conditional use permit, the main official voting matters to be Shawnee according.
Call roll, please.
Young and Peterson.
Young and Peterson.
Young. Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
O'Neill.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Number 11, public hearing and considered an ordinance to rezone property at 4031 North Union from A1 Agricultural to R1 Residential with a conditional use permit to allow for a daycare, applicant Amy McDaniel, public hearing open, staff report.
Yes, this application actually is a continuation of existing daycare. The Janice King Child Care Center is located on the southeast corner of 40th and Union. If you see on the map, the little pink area is the subject site and the square that's noted as R1P, just above it is the existing childcare facility. The property was purchased all at one time, but apparently the original conditional use permit was just for this building. At a later time, they decided to expand their parking, expand their recreational area and didn't realize, didn't know that they were also supposed to get the proper zoning on there. The city does not require a permit for parking lot improvements and this is one of those things that didn't come for a permit and wasn't required to come for a permit and so it kind of wasn't caught. And recently, the property changed hands and of course, the title came out that it wasn't zoned properly. This is one of those kind of take care of it after you've done it. But staff didn't have a problem with this change. It's an extension, the recreational facilities and parking are already in place. There may be at a future time requirements for other types of issues such as landscaping, but at this point, we don't see any of those needs. So staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit for R1P for daycare.
Okay. Anyone wish to speak for or against closed public hearing? Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion?
Motion to accept staff's recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Stevens.
Second.
Second. Second, second, second by Vice Mayor Peterson, read the title, please.
In order concerning the zoning classification, the following described property located in Portland, City Shawnee Auto Mall, two-way, eastbound, southwest corner of Section 9, Council of San Jorge, West Philly, in the area of Portland, County. For reported fact, there is a zoning property from A1 Agricultural to A1P, single-family residential, conditional use permit, the main official voting matters to be Shawnee according.
Call roll, please.
Stevens.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
O'Neill.
Aye.
Aye.
Young.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, number 12, consideration to grant a variance to the subdivision preliminary plat preparation and approval procedure, Article 8, Section 80.2.1, for the preliminary plat of Division Bank Edition, Section 1, and consideration of approval of the preliminary plat of Division Bank Edition, Section 1, located on the east side of North Harrison and south of 45th, applicant Mike McQuain. No, that's not staff, sorry. Staff report. I'm on a roll, let's do all public hearings.
All right.
Let's get out of here. One of the two.
There's two applications on this property this evening. One is SO1-08, which is the preliminary plat of Division Bank Edition, Section 1, and the second one will be the final plat of the same area. The preliminary plat has several variances involved that I'd like to put in one by one. The first one, we kind of broke this up into two sections, one is A and B. A is the variance request for the preliminary plat itself. Subdivision code requires that when you come in with a preliminary plat, that you must give us that plat for the entire property that you own, that's abutting or contiguous to itself. The blue area and the red area are under, actually two ownerships, but they came in together as one preliminary plat. So under our current code, we would require the entire red and blue area to be part of the preliminary plat. The variance is to allow them to plan the plat only the red area, the reasons being that there's a large drainage area throughout that blue area, right where actually where the drainage area is. They are conducting a hydrology study that would tell them a lot of issues relative to how much a detention pond needs to be, how they're going to design the streets, the layout of the lots, and until that's completed, they're unable to go any further with any kind of design or layout of that area. They met with engineering and planning department and I don't think there was any real problems with doing that, so we've recommended to the Planning Commission that they allow this variance and the Planning Commission approve the variance to allow them to plan the plat just the red area that you see right there. And staff recommend approval of that and offer recommend approval of City Commission to accept that variance request. And the second part of this.
Let's handle that first.
I'm sorry.
Let's handle that first.
Okay.
Why would you recommend that we accept a variance to approve a preliminary plat on a partial of an area without any explanation about the effect of drainage that the proposed preliminary plat will have or what their plan is later on on drainage? Why is that a good thing to parcel this out and not consider drainage as a whole?
When they submit their plans to the engineering, they will have drainage that covers the site, the preliminary plat that we actually have there. And have they submitted those plans, John? As of yet, they have not submitted them as of yet.
Oh.
Of the red, of the red area.
For just to golf near state.
Right. Okay. They have submitted the drainage plans that cover the red area.
Okay.
Okay.
So do they, do they meet requirements that say that they are not going to affect the runoff anymore than would normally be affected if they didn't do anything?
Yeah, they're not, for the, in the red area, as the Gulf USA project will have on-site detention just within here. The rest of the areas, the blue, what's not shown on there is a flood plain, under your flood plain, so it can't flatten for that.
Right.
There is an area, if there's hydraulic analysis, to figure out how big a detention pond you can put in to store that hundred year flow, maybe to put in some stormwater to, 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 to shrink that flood plain down so they can perfectly know.
So, but wait a minute. They are going to develop.
They're going to help out there with the concept.
Yeah, but we're not approving the concept, we're not approving the, I mean, you know, that's, they're just talking about it. And there's no numbers that say that development on this property will not affect other property adversely. Do you see, I mean, we have gotten into drainage issues recently because some areas may not have been considered as a whole.
What they're, well, what they're, the preliminary plat is considered drainage is considered.
Okay, so in their preliminary plat, they, within just that red area, they have addressed drainage within the red area.
Correct.
And is this our normal course of business to allow and section out? I mean, are we gonna, I mean, I know we've done it.
This is not, we don't normally do this, that's why it's a variance.
And that's my concern. So, you know, are we setting a precedent here then that every developer that comes in that says, "Well, you know, but I'm not really ready to deal with anything over there, so just parcel out this little bit." Are we going to make that our consistent business practice?
No, that's not consistent business.
Then why is this case different?
I do that, I do that.
Well, why is this case different? Because it's a Gulf USA and we all are dying to have one? Because I know my family is.
No.
But why are we, why are we making this presentation special if we're not going to do it across the board?
You know, it may be possible that their hydrology study comes in and they don't develop that at all.
Okay, but that's not the question I asked because, you know, we are constantly, or Dr. Collard and I talked about this today, and I'm sorry, but the annex is constantly being accused of playing favorites. And what we do for one developer, one piece of property, we don't do for another. Why is this special? Why don't we wait until the hydrology study's done and do it for this entire piece of property? And I'm not trying to like, you know, keep development from happening, but why is this special? Why is? And I guess my concern is because it can be the opposite of what you just said. The hydrology study could show that development on this property may adversely affect the drainage area that's right there. And we don't have a time limit on when the hydrology.
You mean on the blue area or the red area?
Or, or any area east of the drainage area.
The blue area hydrology study won't be developed unless they meet all the requirements of the city, so it won't, nothing, they're not going to do anything that would impact anything until they come in with a project.
But, but development is not allowed to happen unless areas around it are not adversely affected.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And the red area, the red area by itself meets that requirement.
But why are we singling out the red area for this piece of property if we're not doing it across the board for other pieces of property?
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that question. I don't know of any cases that come in that are similar to this that would meet the same requirement.
Yeah, we want some consistency.
Well, if anything came in that was exactly like this, it might come in with a variance, but there haven't been any, so I, there haven't been any requests that are based on the same set of information.
Is there an urgency associated?
If someone came in with the very same project.
Pick and choose, whoever's doing her job gets to pick and choose whether we're going to do a variance.
If someone, if someone came in with a project with the very same stacks of information, we might consider another variance, but.
This week.
The staff, the city, the Planning Commission.
See, that's too much discretion. That's just, that's picking and choosing, that's playing favorites. We get along with this developer, we don't get along with this. I mean, I'm not trying to, I mean, I just want consistency here because we're constantly being questioned about consistency at the annex. What makes this special?
Is there a sense of urgency associated with this?
Not that I know of.
Except that everybody wants a Gulf USA.
There is, what is it?
Okay. Well, and I mean, I mean.
I'll be glad to address anything you stress I can.
The two developers.
When's the hydrology, is the hydrology study going on right now?
Okay, can I, let me also give one other piece of information. I think it's the Gulf USA is actually owned by one property owner. And the remainder of that parcel, which is the south half of the red and the blue area, is owned by someone else.
That's correct.
Okay, is that's correct. It's actually two owners. The Gulf USA could come in as one lot, but let me go down to, let me explain this one. Oh, let me go down one. But in order to get consistent development off of the site, if we came in with just one lot, that more lot, they could come in as a lot by itself as a separate ownership. They would have a driveway on the street as allowed by our code. By allowing them to permit flat, file flat just this piece, which required the variance on the rest of the blue area, we get a street, a public street that goes between the two lots and no driveway from the front. The city does pick up some improvements here that we would not get if we just told Gulf USA, "Sorry, we're not going to get that variance, we're not going to, staff's not going to recommend that there's planning mission, just bring in just your one lot. Give us a driveway off the street on a one lot." So the city does pick up a substantial plus here by not having driveways on the street, by allowing them to come in as one development rather than two developments.
Where's that street going to?
Going nowhere right now because it goes right to the drainage area.
Which may or may not be developed in the future.
Which may or may not develop in the future.
That the city eventually is going to be responsible for the maintenance on the street that may go to nowhere.
That's possible.
Depending upon the hydrology study and development in the area.
But it eliminates one entrance onto Harrison.
It eliminates as much as three driveways on Harrison.
That's a crazy intersection anyway there.
When's the hydrology study going to be done? Do we know?
I don't know.
Any idea? Do you have any?
I just, I just, I can't.
Okay.
So it was based on a set of circumstances of the double ownership, the issues of the, if you bring it in once, you have to put driveways in, the drainage and the drainage. There's a set of circumstances that kind of came together. It wasn't, you don't want to do that? Okay.
The area that we're looking at right here that you're showing us right now is basically the red area.
Correct.
Basically.
That's correct.
So is the lot split between lot number one and lot, or owner number one and owner number two somewhere where that driveway is?
Somewhere right around where this, about the middle or somewhere in this driveway area. I don't know exactly where that split is, but it's somewhere in there. I don't know exactly where that split is, but it's somewhere in there.
And we don't have anything in our codes right now that talk about driveway cuts onto a major arterial, where we say that has to happen, where we, where we encourage things like this, like developers who are...
Our plan encourages development that eliminates driveways on major streets, if you want to put that way. This is a way to do that. Because if we said no, or still did that way, just the one developer bringing this property, it would be that one side and there'd be a driveway up there. And bring in this side, we'd be driving through a driveway here.
But because our comprehensive plan encourages that, we have a developer on the north side who says, "Okay, that might be interesting, I'll look into that," talk to the developer on the south side, and they say, "Oh yeah, great idea, but I'm not ready yet."
That's kind of what happened.
It's kind of where we are.
The developer on the south side wasn't quite ready to do all this, but because it was really in his favor, her favor, their favor to do it. They got together and are doing it.
That's why we have a preliminary.
That's correct.
We're going to do the whole thing here, first a variance to only do a portion, and then we're on the path to the preliminary and final.
Just of the red area. And the red area, as, as John pointed out, has brought in their drainage information and their drainage studies, complete their onsite holding, whatever the requirements are, they've met all of them.
Just, just like over here, some of it, they'll come in and preliminary plat, whole plan, they'll make, do final plats on parcel, this little section, they take years to actually open that up, like, for example, for the, issue of...
But there's been a preliminary plat of the entire, the entire parcel, but they only final it in pieces.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the normal way to do it.
Right, and this is eventually asking us, as we, you know, if you continue to read the agenda, to approve a preliminary and a final of a parcel.
Sure.
All of one property owner and part of another, yes.
Yeah, our plan to be our consistent, that's why they're asking for the variance.
Is there, is there a chance that future development anywhere around in the blue or east would cause a problem, would adversely affect anybody? Well, let's just say, is it, is it first one in gets to put it in whoever they want, then everybody else has to not adversely affect them?
No, but, but, what they're going to be doing, preliminary plat, they're versed in drainage for that. And to build the facility, the store, this building, golf USA, they're going to take their drainage progress side.
Okay.
What they're proposing, the rest of the blue area, whatever, there's some substantial flood plain there that they can't build or build into, the bank is a chemical plant, they can't do the flow. They're doing a, a solid study, I don't know what the timeframe is on that, I don't know when we started or whatever, that's what indicated that they're going to do an hydraulic study. It indicated how much they can tank, and release at a slower rate, for the street floodplain down, where it'll allow them to build the space. And still, they're being used.
Okay.
They all, they're, they're tired, they're going to have to present it to us to show that they will be, as a matter of fact, plant.
So, right now, nothing is planted in the floodplain, and the plats that are before us have sufficiently, or by code, retained the runoff, or taken care of the runoff so that it does not adversely affect, adversely affect the areas around it any more than it did before development.
In the red, the drainage pool is available, it's blocked.
Okay.
It's made of concrete, it's, 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 they're location on site. The one, south of them, across the street, they're not ready to build that bank, it's a, it's a, Sonic Plains Field Bank, the drainage pool bank. What they're proposing is to build, I guess, to keep, they, they, so, they're going to do the actual bank, they'll, 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 they'll sign.
Even though it's not in their preliminary plat right now? Okay, and then what's to keep? Okay, what's to keep then, south of the red line, south of the preliminary plat, on Harrison Street, which is great commercial property? What's to keep someone else from coming in and saying, "Okay, well, let's just take that Harrison frontage, and now we want to parcel out that little section, but not over there east, directly below the drainage, blue lettering?"
I think because at this point, the whole preliminary plat and variance has depended upon the rest of it coming in as one parcel, and that's...
Okay, and that, okay.
Because we get a preliminary plat, and the drainage is taken care of, and preliminary plat stays. Out there on North Kickapoo Street, where you get, these are all, and you get into drainage, this company is accounted for for each particular building, site, or building lot. And out there, you have Sonic, there's a, Sonic, 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 each one takes their own, correct?
So, this has been done before, in other words, what we're looking at doing here?
Commercial, commercial type development is a little different than commercial type development. We take care of drainage.
But is any of this commercial development going to impact east where there's residential development?
Nope.
It's up the hill.
The residential development in east, oh, melt.
It's in the process of being developed.
Take account for their own.
Okay, and so there's not going to be any negative impact from any of that on east?
It's up the hill anyway.
Right, all the water's actually coming from the east.
Right.
You can discuss the second part too, or, or you want to go ahead and...
Well, only because I feel more comfortable with the variance right now because of the attempt to combine improvements with owners, not improvements with lots, if that makes sense, I mean, in this particular case. And because items such as drainage have been taken care of on a lot by lot case, in this particular instance.
In this particular instance.
In this particular instance. And so I can understand where they might want to continue on to, to build, I mean, to, to develop in this case. I wish we had the full thing, of course, naturally.
But, staff thought this was better than getting the one lot subdivision with a driveway on the street, and then ending up with another one lot subdivision with a driveway on the street. And that was part of that discussion.
I understand. We need to remember this discussion when we go to land development code, on whatever day that is.
Sure, yeah.
Next year.
Some Monday in the future.
Yeah. Right, right. But we do, and we need to remember this in the future when something like this comes up and someone says, "Hey, you all don't do that."
Yep, this doesn't happen very often.
We don't parcel things out. Yes, this doesn't happen this way. Well, it does, and so we just need to remember that if we approve this...
But there's a particular set of circumstances of why this one's...
Right, but we need to at least consider it, and staff needs to consider it.
So, part two?
Part two.
Is that 13?
No, that'll, that's B, so this is actually 12A.
12A, okay.
First, we have to approve the variance to even really kind of discuss the preliminary plat.
Staff recommends that the city commission accept the variance that was approved by the planning commission.
So, you need that as a motion?
If you, yes, if you like that.
To continue on? Yeah, I guess. I'll make the motion to grant the variance to this subdivision preliminary plat procedure. You need the Article 8, Section 80.2.1.
I'll accept the reluctant motion by Vice Mayor Peterson. Got second, a second by Commissioner Young. Call roll, please.
Peterson?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
O'Neil?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Okay.
Okay, Section V of this is, is the preliminary plat, and as you see, there is the area that was marked in red on the map that we just looked at. It's divided into two lots, the north lot is half an acre, more or less, and the second lot is about, I think it was .8 acres, we'll see that in the final. There's a public street, as you see noted on there, it's called Vision Boulevard, it's a collector system, so it's 60-foot right-of-way in a larger street. It has a median divided entryway, which makes it a larger entryway, first because at this point it's a dead end, and second just makes it easier for entryway into commercial development. Hopefully, eventually, there will be some additional commercial development to the east, or offices of some sort, and so the divided entryway gives a better entrance in and out. Also, because it is a short dead end, and we'll get to, obviously, we've got a variance too right now, is the advocate asks to not be required to put a cul-de-sac in, which is typically required on our sub-rags, either a full or temporary cul-de-sac on a dead-end street. As you see, it's very narrow, and if you put a 150-foot radius, 100-foot total diameter right-of-way cul-de-sac in there, it, it pretty much destroyed most of lot one and part of lot two. But with a short distance, we, we sat down with the fire department, asked them about how they would get in out with the development as it is, and they verbally agreed that it would be easy, they didn't have trouble getting in and out, just with the two lots that were there, only a lot on north, only a lot on south if there were development, because once the south lot gets developed, there will actually be a parking lot they can go into, a north side, there's a parking lot, plus with the divided entryway, they can make the turnaround easily, and they also agree that this would work without there being a large temporary turnaround, because once the temporary gets in, and it gets extended, they have to take it out, and laying, if you, if you put the cul-de-sac in there, you have a kind of destroyed part of that lot on the north, like putting a very large cul-de-sac in, so, and it really doesn't serve a good purpose on the short term of doing that. So, staff had recommended the variance, which is number two, the variance two are Section 40.2.1, which requires a cul-de-sac at the end of a street that's 150-foot dead-end street.
The little short dead-end street that we have on North Kickapoo by the new Chicken Place, do we, is that a, is that a dead end, or...
Is that the one up on? I've, I've heard a lot about this one, and the problem, I guess, started out is that's a private street, and shouldn't, and probably shouldn't have been.
Oh.
That's probably the best thing I can give you right now, is there was several mistakes made on that one, the first one being it was a private street.
By, 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 that's what I should say, by, by, by.
So, there was some other issues involved in that that I'm, I keep hearing about.
But it doesn't, it doesn't have a cul-de-sac, does it? And it, and it just kind of...
No, and it never had one either.
So, somebody can put a private street in that doesn't meet our code, and it's okay?
No. That, I, I'd say, I know exactly what happened on that particular subdivision, I just know that that was part of the problem, and I don't know how long ago it was approved, but it's, it, it doesn't seem to meet some of the requirements, I'm not sure why, except that it was a private street.
So, this street that we're...
This is a public street.
This is a public street? That we're making an effort to have, so we have less driveway cuts on Harrison, and we have a better entrance into this maybe commercial area if they get it out of the floodplain. Does this street tie into anything that's happening to the east, or anything that's already on the west?
Nope.
No, there's not anything to the east.
That's our intention, subdivision.
It won't tie into subdivision.
They get peculiar, I'm going to study, if they're studying floodplain shrinks, if they're initial proposal is to take that street earlier to east, you all want to get back to the door, and contact, and, and, or, there, where they get in lots, on both sides.
There won't be any connection between this, okay, this development and this development in the long term?
But, okay, so what's the plan then, if the blue area, the floodplain, is not developed? Are we just going to have the city street to nothing?
To nowhere.
To nowhere, with no cul-de-sac, no nothing, just a really nice...
That is a possibility.
Yeah.
Right now, the floodplain is starting about right here, the street actually ends, will end about right here.
Mm-hmm.
So, you see, the only development is going to be that lot and this lot. The driveway, the parking on the, on the, proposals to have this turnaround to serve the H2K.
So, so there's the potential, I mean, just devil's advocate here, there's the potential in the future that if the, the blue area is not developed, the city's going to maintain a public street for the benefit of two commercial businesses, for their traffic and their traffic only.
That's possible.
Just like up there on North 65, they look 66, and out of the, to open, through the place.
But that's not held up by being in a floodplain, and someone have to do anything special? But, okay.
They came out for as long as the tension...
It's school land, there's no telling what will happen.
Yeah, they, yeah, and they never did the belt also.
Okay, so was that a smart move, maybe? Maybe not.
At the end of this, for the cul-de-sac here.
I know, so the floodplain.
Cul-de-sac at B, right here.
Yeah.
Now, you end up with, with a street.
Yeah, with the cul-de-sac.
May I ask a question, please? Uh, O'Fell, Kickapoo, I see where you have six-foot sidewalk, I see where you have four-foot sidewalk. Now, when we was talking about Kickapoo, we only said four-foot sidewalk, are we, I mean, am I out of course?
There's, there's a lot of confusion on that. We're on Harrison here, not, yeah, Kickapoo, John may need to explain a second, because I don't understand the sidewalk situation over there, but on Kickapoo, there are some four-foot sidewalks.
More than six-foot sidewalks.
Well, you say four, then six, um...
But the stake, but the...
On this one...
But we're going to have six foot out here.
On the variance number one, which we just bypassed, we came on the variance number two. On variance number one, they asked for four-foot sidewalks, and planning commission approved a variance for four-foot sidewalks on Vision Boulevard, maintaining a six-foot sidewalks on Harrison. So, the only variance is for the Vision Boulevard strip. Six, there will be six-foot sidewalks on Harrison.
And what are those sidewalks connected to?
Nowhere.
Kind of like that street to nowhere.
And they, they may or they might ever connect.
That's right.
So, we have an ordinance that says with the new construction, it's six, six-foot sidewalks.
Correct.
Interior streets.
Collectors and archers, is what we have.
You're right, the sidewalks may or may not ever go anywhere, depends upon that hydrology study, and if it's ever developed to the east.
Are you going to, Mike, are you going to have a cut over there to get over to Sonic?
No.
You and John have worked that out?
That's a good question.
That'd be a great deal, so you wouldn't have to get back up, you know, this zip over there, and it would be good, you know, you're getting a drink, hey, we can go over here to golf USA.
That's right.
Need a little park, a picnic area out there.
And you wouldn't have to get out and go all the way around, and be dangerous, you know?
That's a good point, that's a good point.
Mike, do you know anything about the hydrology study, what the timeframe means?
All of this is the best I can.
Sure, please. Just the timeframe.
Just to kind of start from the beginning, I think that would be best to kind of explain how this got to be where it is. I purchased the land around the Sonic, 360-foot from the Sonic, south along Harrison, all the way back to the housing addition, and then back to 45th Street. All that L-shaped land was mine. My whole plan was to pull out a lot, put a golf USA store there, sell off the remaining property, help me pay for my existing, I did not have the money, and I never will probably be going in and develop a lot of stuff, so I was just concerned about my property. Within two months, Vision Bank came in and said, "We'd like to buy all your property." And I said, "Well, I want my part out, I'm going to take that part, I'll sell you the remaining piece of the property." And that was okay with them, and was what I was intending to do all along, just didn't foresee it happening that fast. Part of the process was they wanted to buy all of the lands, south to 42nd Street, in addition to mine, they weren't going to do one or the other, they were either going to do both or nothing. So, they worked it out with the people south of me, to go ahead and buy that, so they ended up buying the whole thing. I cut my lot out initially, we moved it back down toward the Sonic, my lot initially was toward the south end of that property, but we moved it back to, toward the Sonic to border that, so it would give them a clean piece of property to do all the development that you see basically here. I'm a little bit disappointed, my engineering friend's not here to show you this, but there is a concept that's drawn up for a, that public street where it dead ends to go all the way down, cul-de-sac, and then go out to 45th Street, with commercial property on each side of that street also. There's also a big lake, it's probably, it's supposedly going to be used for a, what what do you call, I guess, a, it's a detention pond, but it will also be more like a park-like setting, a real commercial, basically business park type deal, where there's park-like setting. That will control the drains that comes from the east and from the south, and then funnel it down to where the floodplain can go from where it is now, down to a 50-foot channel that will allow commercial property on both sides. That's the long-term goal. And like I said, I'm disappointed my engineering firm's not here to show you that, but I wish you could see that, but that's what the prop, the process is. However, I have a franchise agreement with Golf USA. I have to start some sort of construction fairly quickly. So, that's why the preliminary pack came about, of just my Golf USA and their bank side. We couldn't plat according to the city, we could not even plat in the floodplain area, it's not even allowed them, so we couldn't do that. So, we had to do whatever was fastest for me to get open any time. They're also financing my project, so they have an interest in my project also, Vision Bank does. So, they know it has to get going faster than they're planning on getting going with their bank. We just determined that a grand big entrance like that would be much better than me having a little entrance, them having a little entrance and going from there, and then cutting the street all the way through. So, that's kind of how it came about. Timeframe on their plan, I don't know. They've said it could be one to three years on theirs. However, I'm not, I don't have that option, I have to do mine now. But rather than doing mine, just individually, we decided this would be best for everybody in the city involved, once everything is done. But, as far as the drains and the hydraulics, we've discussed that somewhat. The engineering firm thinks that those hydraulics are going to bring that floodplain channel down to about 50 feet, where right now, it's, I'm going to say, what, John, probably 300 feet, right now. And it's in an area that hasn't been studied, that's the other issue here. There's no real firm study that's been done on that area to determine that floodplain. So, and, you know, obviously, with this last year's rain, we, since we own the property, we know, we kept a close eye on it. Never did flood down in there, and with all the rain we had, it didn't then, it's probably not going to. So, based on the hydraulics, that's how they'll tell how big that detention pond needs to be, to release that water at a slower rate, to go through there and get that channel down where there can be commercial development there. But they won't know that the size of the pond until the floodplain, or until the flood study's done. That property is too valuable, and to get an area not to develop it fairly quickly, though, I, that's something I can tell you.
And also, there are some other areas that are probably looking at this, for what is the process to go through to develop some of these other areas that haven't been developed yet, that are sitting very close to this, and have a lot of the same issues.
Exactly.
So, the other thing that we're doing here is we're kind of, I don't want to say we're setting a precedent, but we're setting a precedent for how to do development in some of these other areas that have just laid there, for lack of a better term.
Right.
Because no one else understands how to, how to make it usable.
So, anyway, that's, that's kind of the, from the beginning, how it all came about, and that's just what we're trying to do. There's any other questions, I can try and answer them, if you have any specific ones right quick.
Okay.
Okay, that's the two variances that, that were requested, and the planning commission approved both those variances, four-foot sidewalk on Vision Boulevard, no variance on sidewalks on Harrison, they will be six-foot on Harrison. And the variance to not require the 150-foot dead-end street to have a cul-de-sac, because it's how it physically fits in there.
Does that, does that development go all the way down to, was it 42nd Street or something, that we had a discussion on about whether that's a public street or not, and who's going to develop it?
Where easements are.
We had this with Mehdi Razzimi, about that whole, and the sidewalk there, because it's going to come in the back of his addition.
That's it, that's it.
Is that pretty familiar?
We're not, we're not done with this piece of property yet.
Here's 42nd Street.
Yeah.
That's the street.
As Mr. Stevens was asking to go down, maybe across the street of Harrison on another street, as you see, there are no public streets on the left side of Harrison, so there's no street line up there.
Right.
There are some driveways with our company cars, line the driveway.
You weren't here when we had this big long discussion about that particular road, when Mehdi came in, talking about his development back to the east.
And that's going to come into play later.
As to?
Especially when Phase Two kicks off, we're going to talk about 42nd.
Somebody at some point in the past, hardtop that, I mean, put asphalt down, and it's in horrible shape now. It's part dirt, part asphalt, and there's a church back there now, you know, and some other homes and things, but.
There's water on somewhere.
If that does come in, that'll be an issue, nature and planning standpoint, what happens to this?
This road and the sidewalks that go back there.
So, let's remember that, as we grant a variance right now, for the development of a portion of this. For those of you who may still be around.
I hope that we made it clear to them that the rest of it all has to come in together. I mean, I, I hope they understand that, because that's what it's going to be.
We're still dealing with two different owners.
Right, in this situation, on this red area, it's two different owners.
But the blue area is all the same.
The blue area is all one owner.
And that's Vision Bank, right? Is that right?
The area is Vision Bank, and the north part of the red area is?
Sure, right. Right.
Basically, north of the street, the north end of that street is basically my property mine, because everything, the street is actually owned their property.
Okay.
Okay. I went to the planning commission meeting, Commissioner Holt was there too, and they had a lot of discussion about the wits of sidewalks and everything. And the other thing that I was thinking is if our street improvement on Kickapoo includes six-foot sidewalks on Kickapoo, that I think is a major arterial, that that is a good move to stay with six-foot sidewalks on Harrison.
John, they're not six-foot the ones at Kickapoo, are they?
I think they're four-foot.
I think a lot of them are forfeit. A lot of forfeit.
They were six-foot around by the curb.
There's six-foot of space.
But we're in an area where there are no sidewalks, and so we're going to, we're going to say what's going to happen on Harrison. Harrison's going to be six-foot sidewalks.
That's right, that's right, so.
Okay. So, are we ready to do something with the?
The other thing that we requested were limits of no access on those front lots on Harrison, so there will not be driveways on there.
Yes.
There's a few other things, like the 20-foot easements around the subdivision, there's not, those are just issues that have to be done by the engineer. So, the staff recommendations is to, was already discussed, A. B is to approve preliminary plat, with the two issues being section 40.2.8, allow four-foot sidewalks on Vision Bank Boulevard, and then to not require a turnaround at the end of Vision Bank Boulevard.
It seems like they also made that, uh, number two, with the approval of the?
Correct.
Fire?
And that's listed in the comments.
It's listed somewhere.
On the technical issues, the Shawnee Fire Department are going to review the final street layout.
Right.
The issue was make sure they could get around the median, and they could get their apparatus in and out without any problem.
Right.
That was an issue that, they approved it verbally, but we said, we'd like you to look at it when the final plans come in, and make sure you're okay with that.
That's right, that's right.
That's all the technical issues. So, with the approval of the preliminary plat, includes the technical, technical issues one through eight.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary plat of Vision Bank Edition, section one, subject to technical issues one through eight, and including the, the variances approved by the planning commission.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Call roll, please.
Peterson.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
O'Neal.
Aye.
O'Neal.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Okay, number 13, consider approval of the final plat of Vision Bank Edition, section one, located on the east side of North Harrison, and south of 45th Street. Applicant Mike McQueen.
This is the final plat, which includes only lots one and two, does not include the lots that were in the floodplain to the east. Lots one is .56 acres, and Lot two is 1.23 acres, the same. Variances need to be reaffirmed at the final plat stage, which is the variance one of the four-foot sidewalk allowance on Vision Boulevard, and not require the cul-de-sac on Vision Boulevard. Technical issues, these are also listed in technical issues, the 20-foot utility easements, a few things to change on the final plat and mylar, which aren't, don't read properly, a few items like that. The limits of no access, and the fire department has the last review of the plans on the median, make sure that they can get their apparatus in and out. So, there's nine technical issues on the final plat, and staff recommends approval of the final plat, including technical issues one through nine, and to reaffirm the two variances on the four-foot Boulevard, Vision Boulevard sidewalks, and the cul-de-sac, not requiring the cul-de-sac.
And this drawing that we have in our book doesn't talk about floodplain at all, but before Lot two is developed, they, I mean, detention area, but before Lot two is developed, all that will be taken care of, as building plans come in, etc. Okay, all right.
I'm open to accept staff's recommendation. Motion by Commissioner Young.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Call roll, please.
Young.
Aye.
Stevens.
Aye.
O'Neal.
Aye.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. Now, Mike, we didn't want you to wait all this time and not have your due, so we had to spend plenty of time on your, your two subjects here, so you got your money's worth.
And you will be open when?
Wow!
That's fast.
They got to get that street in, though.
Golf USA, chief, Golf USA.
Golf USA, April 1.
I think that's the end of my, my items, I would like to make one comment on the item we continued on, the auto mall, and the daycare, some of the, when you begin to review your development issues again in the codes, some of the issues that brought about those items are that we don't require permits for improvements of parking lots, we don't require demolition permits for houses, those things that people do and don't realize that they aren't supposed to be doing, or they're doing them improperly, by the time they get done, now they come to us and need us to fix it for them. So, those are some issues that need to be on the list of putting into practice permits in those areas.
I'd like to discuss this just a moment during my administrative reports, Nancy will stand there.
Okay. Yeah, but a quick question is, what are they doing on the auto mall? Did they knock the house down, lay down some gravel?
They knocked the house down, laid down the gravel, and they made the entire frontage of the lot just a big driveway. And they did put a stockade fence in, and they just started, you know, using it to sell cars. You know, it's not a parking lot, it's really a car sales lot, and then the code enforcement noted to them that, you know, this isn't zoned properly, and you're not, you can't park cars on gravel, you know, there's?
Where the house was.
So, so then they come and ask, we need to fix it for them, so we're trying to, you know?
Well, that's what we're here for, though, isn't it?
That's what we're here for. They're coming in on Wednesday, too, to talk about their options and what there are, because we, you know?
There are people here, Johnny, there are constituents, and that's what we're here for.
And a lot of people don't understand that, you can't just get exceptions of variances. When you cause your own hardship, you don't qualify for variances and board adjustments.
We actually have people that we do tell the rules, and they go ahead and do what they want anyway.
Yes, I heard that.
We start to deal with some of those people.
And that's another issue that we have to talk about here in that time, because one of the penalties for that, but anyway.
Oh, that's another story. Okay. New business?
None.
Administrative reports.
John? John? Administrative report.
Can we talk about Kickapoo Street here?
One of commissioners had asked about the project, the airport, on Airport Street.
Airport Drive.
Airport Drive, yeah, from MacArthur to Independence. That was actually an item that was considered at the traffic commission, and they?
The lights?
The lights, traffic lights, right. Not street lights, not traffic signals, but just street lights, street lighting, for the whole, whole mile. That was an item that came before this body, on November, first made in November, under the consent agenda, and this commission approved that item, so that's, and no one pulled it, so there wasn't any individual discussion on that. Since that time, we have met with the OG&E, Robert Gibbs, he's the area customer service relation person with OG&E, and this project is more than just our normal street-like, security-like item that the traffic commission would bring forward, this body would approve, we'd send a letter to OG&E to install a, basically a wood pole with a galvanized frame, pole hanging off it with a security lamp. This project is going to take about 25 to 35 lights, depending on the spacing and the illumination and whatnot. I'm going to meet with Charles Roden, with OG&E, he's out of the Oklahoma City Design Division, because this is going to take, they're going to have to work up an actual scoping of project and design it, and there could be some cost to the city, I don't know what those costs are yet. Once we have the field meeting with him, we'll know more about what the costs are, the timeframe, that they would take in designing it, what timeframe it would be to actually get it installed. Also, there could be some options for type of lights, type of decorative lights, if it was up to me, and I just meet with this guy, we could end up with just some wood poles out there along Airport Drive, and some, some just ugly lamps. So, there is an option there for some decorative type lighting. I would like to take this, once I get what options we, we can maybe obtain, to take that to the beautification committee, and, not that I'm ducking, picking the lights, but I sure would like to get other people's input before we actually tell OG&E to install, install. So, I do have a, tried to have a schedule this Friday, but with their work schedule, and with the, of course, the ice storm, it was awfully difficult to get anyone from OG&E to schedule a meeting during December and the first part of January. But by the next commission meeting, I'll have more information to present to you on where we're going, maybe types of lights, get a brochure with the decorative choices, but I sure would like to take that to at least the beautification committee, and see what they think. There is some items, they're not my projects, but they, I think they were, Mike Sutherd had had some money budgeted for lights, there's ours, a couple of accounts that were rollovers that's budgeted out of the streets department, that is titled Light, Street Light Replacement. I think that was for some of his decorative projects he had going on. Also, we still have money available from the North Kickapoo Street Project, which is another item I'm going to be talking with Charles about on that. We had $200 and some thousand dollars still left for North Kickapoo, that I kept back for street lighting.
For decorative lighting.
For decorative lighting on North Kickapoo. But we might be able to use some of that money on Airport Drive. Also, if you've been out on Shawnee Mall Drive, we had another signal head installed for eastbound traffic there on the left-turn lane, so that now there's actually a left-turn protected movement.
Yeah, because everybody sits there, like, okay, it's not protected, it's a turn, is it Russian roulette?
Yeah, that wasn't, that wasn't a good situation, but we got the additional signal head installed, and it's working okay.
Is that allowed for east-west traffic to flow at the same time, except when the protective arrow is on?
I don't know. I'll check the timing.
Okay, you, it only allow, you know?
Well, while there's left-turn movement, it'd have to be a right turn only. For eastbound traffic, for the left, for the left-turn protected movement, coming northbound is the only way you could, you can only go right. So, I mean, it would just be a matter of putting up a sign saying, right turn on red.
At one point, you know, the traffic was backed up from, from Wendy's to Denny's. That was only on Saturday before Christmas.
Oh, really?
But, you know, traffic could, I was ringing the bell for Sabbath Sunday, which needed more help next year. But the, but having the traffic going east and west, I mean, that could always flow unless you have somebody in that left turning lane, which needs to be protected. There's no one there, it stopped traffic for no apparent reason.
Right.
But was that, do you know if that was-
Yeah, that's the, the additional signal head takes care of that situation. Yeah, the way it was, was that eastbound traffic, you'd have a green, but it would be red for westbound traffic. So eastbound, for the left turn lane, didn't know the westbound would have that red light, so they just stayed there.
Stopped.
So, but this corrects that situation.
Super good.
And that's the only report I have. I scared the socks off my family when I made that turn, because I knew it. They go, "What are you doing?" They go, "Trust me, it's okay."
Yeah, really?
But it's-
This is a update on the chloramine stuff.
Yeah.
Are we on?
Yeah, is it in?
Not, we're, everything is in. We've got the chemicals, we've got everything. There's just one part, just a radio controller that hooks part of it up to the SCADA. They were waiting on, and they're going to put it in on the 17th. So if they put it in on the 17th, we'll go on the 21st. And when we go on, people, we're going to be flushing a lot of fire hydrants, so people need to know that there's going to be water going down the street, lots of it, because we're going to get the big lines, so it's really going to-
And we're going to get some discolored water and-
Some, but not-
Go ahead and name your microphone, please, so we're like picking it up.
But not, not a whole lot, because what we're going to do is, we're going to lower the towers, not enough to hamper fire protection or anything. And then when we go with chloramines, we're going to hit hard and fast and get it in towers, because if it gets the towers and mixes, that's, that's okay.
Okay.
Then we're going to blow the big lines first, smaller, 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 smaller. And then we'll just, some, we got, it's time to blow dead end lines anyway, we do that every so often. So we're going to start doing that. And the dead end lines is where the problem will be, if there is one. So I'm sure there's some we've missed, and I'm sure somebody will call. And we'll just keep a list of the dead end lines and flush them, and we'll do that anyway.
When you flush, are we going to coordinate with the Fire Department and their normal annual flushing? I mean, we have to do this to stay, what is it?
Pressure testing, whatever.
Oh, we do this, it has something to do with our insurance or our-
Rating, a rating.
Okay. Right, because we've, we've put that off for a while, too. But can we coordinate and get some of your requirements met at the same time that we're doing this, or is that going to require too much water?
They could do-
That's a good suggestion.
Might as well.
They could do the ones that we're opening. I mean, we're not going to open everyone in town, but-
Well, then they can go on and finish with the rest of the lines.
Good suggestion.
Right.
It's mainly going to be the big lines, like down Kickapoo, the 24.
Well, at least when we go forward, that we don't say that we haven't done any of them, we really have. I'm just asking, if we can coordinate that, then let's make an effort to, so that we're not totally-
This is the time you're, you don't wait for summertime to be doing that, water running down the street.
Something to think about.
Right.
Yeah, we can try, we can try to do that. I mean, we're going to try, we're going to have a lot of them on at once.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, I'll have to be hopping around.
Yep.
But hopefully it'll go smoothly.
Can I ask you another question about chloramines? There's been some discussion about the use of the ozone equipment constrained our capacity, and we were not able to treat at a rate that the plant was designed for. If we use chloramines, will we be able to go back to the rate that the plant was designed?
No, because chloramines and the flow rate's kind of two different animals, because if we bypass, we can raise our rate if we bypass the settling basins, which the ozone building is sitting on. If we bypass that, then we can go up, but you lose some of your detention time in the settling basins, because the problem is to go out the settling basins, it's got to go through the ozone weeds. But we've had some ideas about fixing that, but basically with some 30-inch pipe and kind of bypassing the whole, the whole ozone building.
And I guess my question would be, do you still need the detention time, and is there, with chloramines?
It's better, it's better if we have, if we have, but if, I mean, if it gets where we need a lot of water, we can bypass and get after it. But it's better if we use the, have the detention time in the settling basins, but we don't have to if we get in our environment. And we've been figuring out ways of doing it, bypassing it, but it takes money, and we've been spending it on other stuff. But that may be a future, future thing, is to bypass the ozone, so we can get our flow back. Because some of them's been wanting to use it for, to make wine in, but I don't know.
Make some money on that.
Now, the revenue's great, there you go.
The other thing on water, periodically, from time to time, we're asked about whether we add fluoride to the water. We don't. We haven't for well over a year. And even people ask about that.
Sorry, Barry, use a fluoride toothpaste, right?
I'm not going to make that recommendation, given some of the studies that are out, but that question has been raised, and we're not doing that, just so people know.
Okay. But the main thing, people just need to know they're going to see a lot of water running down the street that day. It's on purpose, yeah.
And again, is there going to be any taste differences when the system comes up on line?
Hopefully not. The dead end, smaller than the lines, like if there's a four-inch line a mile long, and if it's just, if it just sits there for a while, there may be a taste and odor problem. But as far as the main lines and stuff like that, there shouldn't be.
Yeah, but if there is a taste and odor problem, it still means that the water is fine.
Sure, yeah.
That's the point to be made here.
It's just a transition period from one thing to the other. Hopefully, it'll go pretty quick, because we use the towers, you know, to fill them.
Yeah.
And we'll be flushing hydrants from the water plant all the way out to Hazeldale, where it goes to Meeker. I mean, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of fire hydrants. Not necessarily all at the same time, but they just need to know if they see a fire, the public, if they see a fire plug running, it's on purpose.
It's okay.
Yeah, yeah.
So hopefully, we'll go on around the 21st, if they keep their agreement.
Okay, good. I have two or three quick items under mine. One, staff's having quite a discussion on building security here, and, you know, we have the gate that people have seen, and we do close that at night now. And we're also going to be beefing up the lights and parking on the north side of the building between here and the annex, and a few other things. Some of it will be done this year, some of it will be done as part of the coming budget year, again, just to try to get in front of the security issues that we've already identified. Next, there is, and it gets back to what we're talking about right at the end of Nancy's presentation. I'm making some decisions as the acting community development director, and some of them come up on like sidewalks. And I'm doing what seems to be reasonable, but it's, the more I think about it, the more guidance I'd like to have. I'm trying to strike this balance without bringing this stuff. But like, you know, I made a decision, there was, you know, code called for six, six feet on a major arterial, but it was physically impossible to do that. So I went out on site, and, you know, what they could actually do is four feet, that seemed to be the real reason, but I think-
In a collector or a major arterial?
Wasn't that a collector?
I think it was a collector, thank you, that's good.
Center Street or something?
Yeah, it was Center Street, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, thank you. But I guess what I'm saying is, is it okay to do that? You know, I mean, I'm trying to be consistent, but it's kind of hard. And what triggered my thinking was sitting in on the planning commission where they made this determination, maybe that's where it should be. See? So I don't know what you all, I don't know what I'm supposed to do.
I remember, and my concern during the planning commission meeting was that there was an issue before us, and it was this preliminary plat and a request for a variance on sidewalks, but the staff presentation said that variances have been given in other locations, I guess during the building process.
Yeah.
I don't know. So it's being done at different levels, and I think the question came up to me, then, why does some go before the planning and the city commission, and some get handled in the annex?
Consistency.
So, you're right, it's, you need to be, I guess, asking for guidance on what's acceptable, because-
Yeah, I really don't know what to do.
Because those are the things we don't hear about. And then we get a phone call that says, why do I have to ask for it, when somebody else just got their deal done in the, you know, in the annex, so.
Again, you know, what seems reasonable to me may not be reasonable. You know, that's kind of a tough thing to-
It's not that the decision is right or wrong, it's just, there's no notice of it.
Yeah.
We don't know if 15 a week are being done over there, or one, or what's the, you know, what, what's, why is the request?
Yeah.
I mean, nobody's going to put a sidewalk in this, in, in this town if they think they just have to go to the annex and ask for a variance.
Yeah. That's, that's a really valid point. That's really how I put it on the-
But if you have physical limitations, you have to make that judgment call. And then you can back it up by saying, you can't put the six foot in here, you know?
Yeah, Center Street was just not possible. Like one out, there's one out the lake, for that matter.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just-
I think good documentation will fix some of that.
Okay.
And notice.
And just consistency, you know, we've talked about, you know, is-
The same argument, the same logical applies to each incident.
It's kind of like being a district, you know, in that one location, you know, are there other sidewalks? No, okay. Yeah, just try to be consistent, reasonable. Well, and that's where I've asked for either a list or a note on the plat or some things. Why was this different? Why was this built different than what the plat originally said? And I think there needs to be an explanation for that. What was the reasonable explanation at the time? You know, when you went out there and looked, and there was a tree there, or there's a, you know, a light pole or something like that. What is there? And that's the documentation that we've lost over the years.
Yeah.
So it's hard to remember five years ago, it's hard to remember five months ago, but it's hard to remember five years ago, why didn't they comply with the rules at the time?
Yeah, that's really a good point. Nancy, can we- Where are you, where are you talking about?
That was new development.
It was new development.
It was new development. We didn't delineate, I don't think, in our code, in some pieces. Oh.
Oh, okay, that's true.
Because, that's right. That's right. That's right. Well, I think, you know what, the key is just to document the reasons why, so that when it's questioned later, oh, well, here's a memo, and here's, here's why. And you get the same answer I got, because someone read from the, I mean, you know what I mean? Yeah. Just document.
Well, I'm-
Try, try to be reasonable, try to be consistent, and document reasons why, and I think we'll all be okay until we get through this transition time.
Okay. I was feeling good about a decision I made this morning until about 30 seconds ago.
No, you made the right decision.
Okay. The last one I have is, oh, we're kind of tied to that. We don't have the ability to handle the development code right now. We just don't have the administrative capacity to do it. Now, the question becomes, is there's still some stuff that probably needs fixing? And I, you know, maybe we can't, and I forgot, you said something happened this afternoon a few minutes ago, that triggered, I don't remember it now. But there's something we might be able to-
Parking lots.
Parking lots, thank you very much. That's it. Yeah, we could maybe bring a list of modifications to the existing, you know, like we ought to require that on parking lots.
Bring a box, bring a box of Band-Aids.
Well, but you know, well, that's the same old, same old.
But that would be consistent later on.
That whole proposed development code is just going to be a nightmare to get through. I mean, it's truly, and it's, and it's not reasonable. And I think we are better off fixing-
Tweaking what we have.
Tweaking what we have, fixing what needs to be fixed in the code that we have, and let's just put this other item on the back burner and hope we forget about it. Staff's nodding yes. Everybody agrees, your developers agree. We all know the issues that we, that are hot buttons that we have got, and I think we don't, I don't want to continue to pass it along, pass it along, pass it along. Things like the five items on a manufactured home, zoning, instead of mentioning that as approval with these five items, let's put those five items in a code, and let's be done with it.
Yeah.
Let's just, I mean, there are things like that that we all know, that I say, let's, one of the things I thought we were going to talk about on our special Monday meetings is where are those, where do they need to be laid out, like what do we need to have for parking lots, and what do we need to have for mobile homes? And let's discuss it and get those written up and codified.
Yeah, pick the sticky points.
Okay.
Yeah. It's so simple, you know, why can't staff, just as they see these things, I mean, now we know tonight, we've, we've recognized the mobile home issue needs to be addressed. Okay, put it on the next agenda, and let's deal with it. We, we see the problem, it needs to be fixed, let's fix the problem. And then it's not an issue. Don't wait for a new closure.
That helps.
And that helps with all the- Just add-ons we have to do every time. Yeah, and as staff sees the issues, as the annex recognizes, hey, we're having to address this, okay, well, let's just fix it and bring it before us. That's what we're here for.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That, that helps.
And throw the other one over to the side for now.
Yeah, okay. Last item I have is, kind of, is an interesting segue. Next Monday, we start the marathon. Maybe we've already started the marathon. Whatever, next Monday-
We've been in it.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of true, for like several years. Next Monday is the Economic Development Work Session.
Right.
And we're going to do this, another one that I messed up your agenda, Dr. Merler, that primarily is going to be the Economic Development Work Session. And I would defer to any of y'all in terms of additional comments on that, and then I'm done, so I hand off to you.
We, as a SEDF Executive Committee met, because I think the SEDF is, is required or was asked to bring to this board what their plans are, what the budget is, et cetera, et cetera. So that has been, there's a recommendation that goes before the SEDF Board on Wednesday to be approved, so that the SEDF can come before this board on Monday night and make the presentations.
Right.
Now, I don't think they're planning on doing the year-end review like Pat always comes and does. I don't think they're, they're considering that.
She comes for a regular meeting, yeah.
That's right, that's right. So mainly just what their plans are. I don't know, I've discussed with them, I don't know how, we need to talk about how to interface priorities with the SEDF and priorities within this commission as it relates to funding of those priorities that, you know, the SEDF has to. So I think we, we may end up talking about some things like development at the airport, or infrastructure for companies, you know, that want to locate here, those kinds of things. So I don't want to, I don't want to forget that. Their main thing is to come with a budget and a, and a request and approval for what the plan is. So that's what they've been working on.
And that'll help us, because we're getting, you know, we're fixing to do budgets. And of course, the budget's under a lot of strain, which we keep talking about. What? I mean, there's a, there's a lot of priorities that we all know about, you know, the pool and, and a whole host of other things. The municipal auditorium, you know, we were going to do the-
Strangler.
Strangler this time, came in over, over budget, so we're revisiting. And then we were talking about next year doing the air conditioning. Those are the kinds of discussions, tennis courts, or the skate park, and so on and so forth. So this discussion, from my standpoint as a city manager, I'm really looking forward to next Monday night, because it gives us an idea on how to start compiling the budget.
Great. Okay. No more, no more administrative reports, right?
No, I'm curious about the score of the football game right now.
31-10. It was 31-10, with five minutes left in the third quarter, and that was a few minutes ago, so.
Yes, the Southerners and-
LSU's winning. Kind of beating the snot out of Ohio State right now. Okay. Commissioners' comments. I want to say that we are ramped up and about to kick off our second phase of the Horse in the City project, and we are going to probably procure these horses from another company that has other poses that people have been wanting, like a raring horse. And we have grazing horse and a Arabian and a thoroughbred, so we have some other horses. Those will be, we'll have, we'll get this on our website here pretty quickly, and have some press releases. Hopefully, the local newspapers will be accommodating, and let us get that information out. We'll also have the Oklahoma Visual Arts Council- We'll also have the Oklahoma Visual Arts Council trying to get it out, the word out to the artists. So within the next three weeks, we're gonna probably have another deadline of about the next three weeks to get the horses sold. I've got, I don't know, probably at least 10 or 12 right now. And I think that when we advertise, we're gonna get a lot more. So beautification committee is, again, kinda ramrod-ing this somewhat with a public arts subcommittee with artists and a couple of beautification committee members and Dean Pollock, Dane Pollock from the Mayfair Museum. So another exciting project, and hopefully, this one will be even better, because we've got some other poses and things that we can do. So anyway, let me know if, if you're interested, or you know someone that's interested. Other comments?
I'd like to say that Mr. Mayor and Dr. Carr, I've been getting calls about the windmill there.
The what?
The drive-through.
Drive-through.
Yeah, I should've, I should've commented on that.
So I'd appreciate if y'all, I let the people know, because they said the handicaps and the older people are being tied up, and they can't get through. And so could you all make comments about that tonight, please?
Yeah, I'm glad you grifted that up, and, yeah, come on, Don. We, we're gonna fix this, and then, we've been waiting on a company to step up. We're not gonna wait anymore, we're gonna fix it, and then go back to the company after that. And Donna, actually look into an awning in one.
Yeah, we, we're having two awning companies come in, one was this afternoon, another one on Wednesday to give us prices on. What we'll do is tear off that overhang out there, go back to a flat wall and put an awning over that area. It won't be quite as aesthetic, but it'll, it'll be nice. It's gonna be in the scalloped edge and all that, and be nice material that we can wash and all of that. And so, and we'll do that, and I'm getting together a trail, and we'll look at then submitting a claim to the company, let them go forward from there.
How soon do you think that'll be?
Uh, I'd say within two weeks. We've got demolition companies coming in tomorrow to take a look at, at tearing down the old overhang. So as soon as we get that done, and we get some semi-decent weather, the awning companies can get in and give us a couple of days and then get that up and going, so. You bet, thank you. And, and thanks to everybody who's put up with us through this, it's been a long process, and we need to get it open. So we're gonna work on that.
I'd like to say something about the horses. And on a good note, wish there was more people here could see it and hear it, but I had a relative came into town over the holidays, and she sent us a note today, and I just wanna read it. Surely enjoyed our visit to Shawnee. Especially your herd of horses, took pictures of all that I could find. We took her everywhere except out to the expo. Special thanks to the motorists at Kickbooh and McArthur who held up the green light so I could get a camera shot from the bank parking lot. And she closed it off by saying, true western hospitality. Came from my sister-in-law Jenny Cummings from Mountain View, Missouri. And she wanted to let us know that they really, really enjoyed the, the horses. The other thing that I wanted to talk about, and I think I'll bring this up on the consent agenda when we meet, is we have a couple here in Shawnee that has reached a milestone. And I don't think they'd be able to come down, but I have more information about that. And I'd like to get that, and maybe the first part of it, where more people are watching. Most people probably in bed by now. But I'd like to do that, and I'll come in and, and talk to you about that.
Okay. Any other comments?
January 18th, Jim Bryant will be inducted to the Shawnee Basketball Hall of Fame. January 19th, the Shawnee High School alumni will play their annual basketball game. If you're interested in playing, supporting the game, please contact me, my number's somewhere. January 20th, it's gonna be the Martin Luther King Junior Celebration. It's gonna be held at Galley Baptist Church at 1025 East Ninth Street. Program being put forth, and I'd like to say thank you to Dorothy Cooks for putting this program together. But it's open to the public, and it's gonna be at 3 o'clock at Galley Baptist Church at 1025 East Ninth Street. That's off the corner of Ninth and Shawnee, and that is January 20th.
I'd like to say one thing, too. Over the last week or 10 days, there have been some traffic accidents that have resulted in some tragic deaths of some young members of our community. And I want the family and friends to know that they are in our prayers.
On that note, too, but I just have to say this, that John Winteringer has called me and is looking for people to donate for Anne Blair Memorial, and actually would like to do a horse in her honor. So anyone that's interested, so John Winteringer is kinda pushing that. So she loves horses and dogs, so. Anything else? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Young, call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, we are adjourned. Okay, open the meeting for the Shawnee Municipal Authority, January 7, 2008. We have a quorum, consider approval of consent agenda.
Submove.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Holt, second by Vice Mayor Peterson, call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, administrative reports?
None.
New business? Motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Motion by Commissioner Young.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holt, call roll, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Aneal?
Aye.
Aneal?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Open the meeting for the Shawnee Airport Authority, January 7, 2008. We have a quorum, consider approval of consent agenda.
Submove.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner O'Neill, call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you, administrative reports?
None.
New business?
I have a number four on mine.
Yep.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's number four. Sorry, number four. Confirm action taken under city commission agenda item number two, aye, regarding donation of furniture by Lance Fenton to the Shawnee Regional Airport.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Mayor Peterson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Holt, call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Motion carries, thank you, administrative reports?
None.
New business? Thank you for keeping me in line. Motion to adjourn.
Submove.
Motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Holt, call roll, please.
Aye.
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 We are adjourned.